All right, we are live.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and get this regularly scheduled council meeting called Order. We'll start with roll call. Amy Patillo.
Here.
Amy. Sarah Hudson.
Yeah.
Gavin Massengill.
President.
Wendy Hundley.
Here.
Just to double check, we don't have Buck Dewey yet. We also have Ashley Wayman, City Secretary, Amber Lewis, Administrator, and Charlie Zek, City Attorney, joining us on the dais. With that, we will move on to public comments. We're going to limit comments to two minutes. And if you are interested in speaking to anything not on the agenda, you'll click the button down in the lower right-hand corner of your screen. It quite literally says raise hand, and that will let us know that you're interested in speaking in the public comments section. We will give it just a second in case anyone's joining us. All right. Going once, twice. Going to go ahead and close out public comments and kick off our presentations. We have a presentation discussion, possible action on a quote from Nalissa Headen Consulting to perform a study of the city's LUE assignment and policy. I believe we have Nalissa here. I'll tell you what, we're going to go ahead and call up presentation or item three, which is also from Nalissa, presentation, discussion, and possible action on a quote from Nalissa Headen Consulting to perform a water rate study. Ashley, Amber, you guys want to make sure that Nalissa is here?
Yes, we do have Nalissa ready.
Thank you. And sorry, Nalissa, I butcher your name every time. This has been an ongoing.
Don't be sorry at all.
Your apologies. And Ashley, I sincerely appreciate the very subtle nod there. Nalissa, the floor is yours.
Well, good evening. I hope you all are doing well this evening. I believe you have two items on your agenda, as the mayor highlighted, which are related to proposals for your consideration, which were requested by your city administrator. I'll first touch on the proposal for the determination of LUEs, and then we'll go to the proposal for the water rate study. Feel free to answer questions as we go through. Starting with the LUE proposal, before we get into the nuts and bolts of the scope of work, I'd like to first back up and talk about an LUE and what it is and why it's important. Essentially, the city uses a term called an LUE or a living unit equivalent for a basis of your base fee charges currently on your wastewater connections. LUEs are a way the water industry kind of normalizes terms between residential and commercial connections. Everything into a like term so that we look at this as a term we apply to a commercial connection to get it in like terms or like means as a residential. While it's used very widely in the industry, an LUE, it is how an LUE is determined is not as common. There are several different ways to determine a living unit equivalent. It depends on the utility itself, as well as for the purpose for which you're looking at it being whether we're doing this for rate-making purposes or from an engineering perspective to plan infrastructure. When we're looking at LUEs, there are a couple examples of ways to look at an LUE include meter size, where we have a table that says if you have a two-inch meter, you are the equivalent of X mini LUEs. That is one method to do it. Another method would be based upon usage type in building square footage. So if you are a 5,000-square-foot restaurant, you have a certain factor that's applied as an LUE versus a 1,000-foot restaurant. Then we look at, we can look at historical consumption of the actual customer and have it be reassessed regularly, like you do with your winter averaging for wastewater. So these are various options out there. Each option has its own pros and cons. The pros and cons really get down to the most fair and equitable way to do it for customers, as well as the implementation of the policies. So as you can imagine, if you're doing it differently every year, like you would looking at last year's consumption, that's going to have more administrative burden than having a table that applies to everybody. And once your LUE is determined, it stays put. So what the scope of work looks at is really providing you with an analysis that evaluates the different options that are out there. For each of your commercial connections, we'll give you a table that basically has option A, B, C, D, so on and so forth, side by side, and compares that to your existing LUEs that are in place for your commercial customers. We'll give you then a look at what using your current rate structure is, what those base fees would look like. And then we'll have a talk and a discussion of the pros and cons of the options and work with you to evaluate the options, to understand those pros and cons, and to get to a happy medium, if you will, to be as fair and equitable to your customers and likewise achieve your policy issues as well as the administrative implementation. Once we've done all of that and you come to a decision on what you're looking for and which option you select, we'll then work with your staff to develop a standard operating procedure that your staff can use moving forward so that if you have new customers coming in, your staff can just simply evaluate and assess that LUE determinant for your staff. So in a nutshell, that's the scope of work and the proposal that we put together. I'm happy to address questions on that particular item.
Counsel.
I have something. So I read through the proposal and one of the things that, you know, I think that we didn't get the LUEs looked at the first time. And I want to make sure that in addition to getting LUE-related information, that, and this goes with the next item as well. I think it's important for you to actually look at the bills that the city receives from the city of Austin. Because several years ago, I went and actually looked at the bills and discovered that our water rate consultant wasn't including all of the actual costs that the city of Austin sends to us in the water rates that we were setting. And there was extra like $60,000 in the bills that had never been included. And, and I think that, you know, I don't know that that was anyone's fault. I think that we have a small staff. And I think part of why we would hire you as a consultant, as an expert, is to come in and not necessarily expect our staff to be experts in understanding how to set wastewater rates or water rates or our accountant to be an expert in, in that. But that you would actually come in and get all of that documentation and then make sure it's reviewed when you're assessing the true costs. Sure. So I don't know if that was done this time or not, but I was reading through your proposal and it seemed like that there was a lot more, there was a lot of focus on the staff having to provide more, some of the synthesis of the data. And I just, I think it's important for you to actually get the raw data bills. And there may be things that you see and realize that other people who aren't doing this as their expertise don't understand how that's actually, how that would impact why, how a rate would be set. Sure. So I just want to make sure we don't miss all of the documentation. And I would say the other thing is, is that AWR sends over a lot of reports that Abel gets, but that don't make it to the city council, don't necessarily make it over to Amber's desk. And that because they're not, they're not, he gets them. But as I've talked with him about it before, they aren't part of what his purpose is. So he gets them and he has them there. And I, I think that we have such a small staff. It's important for you to then get those reports and to do the analysis of them. And not, and I think that, so I just want to make sure there were, there were a few places in the proposal where it felt like it was putting more of a burden on our staff to actually have done some initial analysis. And I just think that if we're hiring a consultant in the future, the consultant needs to actually look at the raw data and do the work of extracting what's important.
That's a very good point. And yes, I apologize for the confusion on the proposal. We do need the staff to give us the data, but we give your staff a very long list of data and they are the raw reports, including city of Austin bills, the actual contracts, all of the, lots of billing data. In fact, a lot of the billing data are data that are even reports that we go to your staff and your engineer. They're, they're additional reports that we need to be able to analyze. And we go back and look at that source data. And several of the things that we'll do is even looking at, okay, well, how much water did you get built for and how much did you sell? And what's our water loss factor there? And are we missing anything? We go look at historical data as well. So we go back a minimum of three years, preferably five years or more, and pull all of that data, put it side by side by side, because a lot of times history tells me a great story. I've had studies where we've gone and found lost accounts where something happened in the billing and all of a sudden 30 connections dropped off. And because I look at it on a month-to-month-to-month basis, that allows me to find and detect those anomalies. And so that, that level of detail is done. And I apologize if the, the report gave a different impression. We rely on your staff, though, to get me the data. But once I go through and analyze every bit of it, yes.
Okay. I guess the other thing I would say is I wouldn't assume that anything has been done in our system that would typically be done. So I think that, you know, we're, we're doing almost like a second round here on the wastewater rate. And I, I just want to make sure that we're high, like, I just want to make sure it's clear to you that we're hiring you because you're the expert. And we're assuming that you are going to tell us all of the different things that need to be studied in order for us to adequately set a rate and not assuming that our staff are those experts, because we're hiring you to do it. If, if, like, I mean, I have no doubt that our staff could learn to do it. And I know that they can give you adequate data and I know that they understand the system. But I think it's important for our consultants to understand they're coming in, you're coming into a small city with an infrastructure and billing that has not, has, has potentially not been looked at very carefully in a long time. And so we need you to actually tell us this is missing. Sure. And if you have the raw data, that should be clear. Like, you know, and if you see types of policies that other cities typically have, and we don't have one of those policies, I think that needs to be brought up earlier. So those are the things that I just want to make sure that it's clear that we are, we're going to an outside consultant because we need the expertise in evaluating what we don't have.
Sure. We can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Do we have any additional thoughts or questions for Nalissa on this point?
Sarah, your hand is raised. Yes. So I think that Amy is bringing this up because we did not have all of that done in the wastewater rate study that we got already. And my question was, we need to recalculate our wastewater rates after the LUE study is done. Because the LUEs were used to set the the, the base rate calculation, and they were also used for the standby rate calculation. And they are clearly not accurate. The LUEs are, you know, missing large sources. So that those calculations and the rates that we just set and had just implemented do not include everything that they need to include. So I'm wondering if the reassessment of those rates is going to be included as part of the original wastewater rate study that we have already done.
Of course, of course. So anytime our, the models are always built so we can update at any point. So to the extent council adopts a change in your wastewater LUEs, we would go in and reassess those wastewater rates and give you those updates. Absolutely.
Yeah. And it's a little disappointing that that was not pointed out, that there was problems with the LUEs before we established new rates and have started billing people differently. And now we're going to have to go back and change those again and, and you know, change our billing rate again. It, it, it's not a good luck.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other questions, counsel? If not, we do have both items pulled up. I just as soon allow Nalissa to present item three before we consider taking any action. Nalissa, the floor is yours.
Okay. Well, thank you. And you've also been provided with a proposal for a water rate study. Water rate study essentially consists of four pieces. The first piece in the water rate study is the determination of revenue requirements. Revenue requirements are the revenues you need to recover from your water rates in order to make ends meet, essentially. We work with you and your staff to determine appropriate revenue requirement. Starting with your budget, we make adjustments off of that. That's the step where we'll go in and look at, for example, your contract with the city of Austin, your bill with the city of Austin. We look at your historical expending as well as your budget to analyze and identify whether or not adjustments are appropriate. We will work with you all to look at and identify if we need different scenarios. If you recall wastewater, we talked about a policy of including some reserve funding for vehicles, as an example. We'll look at those items to make sure we understand and include all of those items as appropriate in the analysis. And if we need to look at different scenarios, we'll do that. The second step in the process is to look at and determine a cost functionalization. Cost functionalization, we use a process defined and described by the American Water Works Association, which is called the Base Extra Capacity Methodology. I promise you, the word functionalization is a real word in the utility rate-making industry, even though Webster's dictionary doesn't think it is. Which essentially, to understand cost functionalization, we first have to understand how our water utility is built. Whether it's your water utility or you're buying it from the city of Austin, water utilities are built with a certain amount of extra capacity to handle times of peak demand. They're built for July in central Texas, where everybody on the same day starts watering their lawn, running their dishwashers, their washing machines, all of those things at once. To understand extra capacity for times of peak demand, I always use a real-world example that most of us can relate to a little bit better, which is a restaurant. If we were to go to a local restaurant, if it's a good restaurant at seven or eight o'clock on a Friday night, we'll probably find that every table is full. We may even have to wait in line to get in. But if I go to that same restaurant at two o'clock on a Tuesday, it's probably a ghost town. It would be an easy question to ask, well, why does a restaurant have 50 tables when we serve 10 tables per hour? We take how many tables we served over a 24-hour period? Well, the answer there is extra capacity to handle times of peak demand. Just like our restaurant or water utility is built that same way. We build all of this extra capacity so that we, our residents, our customers can have water when they need it. We actually build it to the minute of peak demand. We have to do that by law. As it turns out, there's a cost impact to maintaining extra capacity for times of peak demand. In our restaurant, we had to build a larger building. We had to heat it and cool it. We had to clean it. We have to have more staff that comes in just for those peak time periods. And all of those costs increase our total cost for operating that restaurant just because we need to handle those times of peak demand. It are, just like our restaurant, our water utility is the same way. We had to build everything bigger. The bigger your pump stations, the more they cost to operate. We have the same impact for these extra capacity costs. As it turns out, customers use water very differently. If we were to chart customer usage, some customers, we would see very little deviation in their demand from one month to the next. Other customers, we're going to see a big peak or a spike in their demand. Typically, these are going to be irrigating customers, whether they're residential customers or commercial irrigation meters. But we also see other factors like businesses, restaurants, if they have peak factors. Resorts sometimes do. All of these things come into play. What the Base Extra Capacity Methodology does is identify who's putting those extra capacity burdens on the system and assigns the cost to those customers. So in the second phase, we then look at our cost functionalization. We put costs into three categories. The first category are base cost of service, which is the cost of meeting our average daily demand. We look at this on a line item by line item basis. And we look to the AWWA's guidelines on how to treat various cost categories. We put them into base cost of service, which is the cost of meeting average daily demands. Extra capacity cost of service, which is the cost of meeting that peaking demand. And customer cost of service, which is the cost of meter reading and billing, so on and so forth. Once we've put our costs into these three categories, we then go in and allocate our costs to customers. Base costs of service are allocated, looking at your average daily demands on the system. Extra capacity cost of service are the cost of meeting those peaking demands. So we allocate that to customers based on their pro-rata share of their peaking on the system. And customer cost of service are allocated to customers based off of their pro-rata share of the total customer count. Then we move to the fourth step, which is we design rates. We now have a cost assigned to each category or class of customers. As part of this process, we also look to make sure our customer classes are appropriate, whether it's residential and commercial, or do we need other subcategories there? Again, we balance that. The need for being as fair and equitable as we can with the need to, for administrative ease of implementation and understanding of the process with your customers. So we look at those. Once we do that, we then design rates, which is our final step of the process. In that process, we look at the base fee. We look at the volumetric charge. We look at your tiered rates. We work with you to understand, and this is where some of the art comes in. The art being what is the balance between all of those to achieve policy considerations and at the same time to recover your cost of service? So we look at all of that, to the extent it's necessary. We look at different scenarios, looking at your base fee and your volumetric fee customer classes. And we can bring you various scenarios and work with you again, to make sure we're achieving your policy considerations. This can sometimes be a little bit of a circular process to be able to get to a final rate that you, as a city, are comfortable with that achieves your policy considerations. We then bring with you, of course, those recommendations. To the extent it's necessary, we can bring a couple different scenarios. And again, we can go back and forth and continue to draw scenarios as you all feel are necessary. That being said, do you have questions on that piece of that proposal?
Counsel, floors are open to you.
Um, one question I had, I was looking at this proposal beforehand, and I feel like you've explained the customer classes a little bit more during the presentation. But I wondered if you had looked at our current customer classes. Right now, we just have residential, commercial, and then landscape, I believe, from the commercial. Is that a low number of classes in comparison with other, what other municipalities do that are our size?
For a community of your size, it's very common to have a very simplified structure. Typically, the three is a very appropriate structure. We'd have to look at the exact connections, you know, sometimes we'll see the addition of of apartments or multifamily. That would be the only other category that typically we may see. Other communities where if you have an industrial cut connection or something where they're just a giant user, that may be necessary as well to look at and identify if that user also needs more specific examination.
All right. Do you ever see multiple classes of residential users?
No, no. Typically, we don't. The only exception to that would be, for example, the city of Austin. They have a residential customer class, but every single customer has their own peaking ratio. So when you set a tier, the tiers are kind of multiples of your own historical usage, which requires a very sophisticated billing software. Some cities will do that. But typically, it's just one residential class. We can certainly look at if there's a more appropriate, depending on your exact community and concerns, but typically, we just do one residential.
Yeah. Well, and that's an interesting factor then to bring up too, is like what software we're going to have to actually do the billing. And so that seems like it will be a boundary as well on what types of rates we would set.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Amy. Do we have any other questions, counsel? Any hands raised?
Wendy's hand.
Nobody's hand. All right.
Okay. And so I just have a quick question about, oh, sorry, that's my alarm to give my son his medicine. About setting, when we're setting the rates, we have a lot of infrastructure projects that are out on the horizon. I listened to the utility meeting. And we're talking about possibly electronic meters. We have like some properties in our city that still have backyard water lines. We have like some water line improvement projects we need to do on cul-de-sacs. So what part of those infrastructure needs that we have as a city, do you incorporate into the rates? Or do we have to kind of go out and, and find the money somewhere else?
Great question. It's totally to you. So what we'll do is we'll first start off with your capital improvement plan. That's part of the revenue requirement determination phase. We will look at those CIP projects. We'll look at your current available funding. Do you have reserve funds available, et cetera? And then we'll work with you, both your staff, your utility commission, and you as counsel, in whatever combination you all feel is most appropriate to determine a funding plan. That's where, again, this can become a circular process and/or lots of scenarios. What we'll typically do is give you a status quo scenario, which is we're not going to issue any debt. We're just going to leave everything alone. Then we'll give you a fully loaded scenario, which is we're going to pay for everything and it's going to be, all be done in the next couple of years. And then we'll work with you on And then we'll work with you on where the happy medium is with that. But we look at funding plan can include, for example, electronic meters where maybe we cash fund them. So we add a little bit to the rates to pay for them with cash and we do so many a year over a certain period of time. Or we lease them, or we pay for them with debt. And we work to around those scenarios, but that's absolutely part of that revenue requirement phase. Because that's a huge part and influencing factor on what the appropriate rate is. So we want to make sure that you recover what you need. And that includes, of course, those projects.
Great question. Thank you, Wendy. Do we have any other questions, counsel? Not hearing any. Nalisa, thank you for taking the time to present. Counsel, we have potential discussion and action still available for either or both items. Do we have a motion? Anybody so inclined to kick off a discussion?
I would move to approve the LUE determination proposal and water rates a proposal.
Second.
We have a motion from Amy and a second from Wendy.
Take those up separately since they are separate agenda items?
They've both been called up together, so. I'll defer to Charlie, but I think we're probably good with the motion as it's been presented.
You can, you can, or you can take them separately.
Can I request that we take them up separately?
You can. We have a motion on the table. So if they're willing to withdraw the motion. Or otherwise, we'll need to take a vote on the motion and vote it down. And then you're free to take a separate, to present a separate motion. Amy, Wendy, thoughts?
I'm, I'm willing to withdraw the motion. I, I felt like it was proper to take them up together, but. I'm open to them being separately discussed and there being some issue relating to timing that it would be separately discussed.
Okay, so is, can I, can we have Ashley accurately record that as a withdrawal of the motion?
So, okay, thank you. Can I make another motion?
Wendy, you're good with that, too? Can we safely assume that's a yes?
Giving you a thumbs up, sorry.
Okay, thank you. All right. Yes, Amy, you're free. Go for it.
I would move to approve the LUE determination proposal.
Second.
Motion from Amy and a second from Wendy. Discussion, counsel?
Can we discuss who is going to be the project manager from the city's standpoint on this project? We, we need to make sure we have somebody assigned for the city that is going to be responsible for following up on the city's side with the project. Do you have a recommendation? I mean, there are no, we're not very deep on the bench.
So can, can you also define what project manager is? Because the proposal actually has Nalisa as the project manager. So I'm, I'm confused as to what the role would be. As, as far as you're saying project manager from the city's side, I don't know that I know what that means.
That means that there's somebody on the city's side that is following up and making sure that everything is evaluated properly. The information is reviewed on both sides. This is kind of what I do for a living and, and you don't ever have just the consultant managing the project. There is always a point of contact on the other side. You know, the client side, which is us in this case, who is primarily responsible for following up and being the point of contact on the project.
So perhaps, yeah, perhaps that's where the miscommunication is coming in. A primary point of contact is how I refer to that rather than a project manager. Is that help clarify that? Amy?
I think so, because if we, I mean, there's a point at which if we're, if we need a project manager on our side, it needs to be someone with a certain level of engineering skill. Like you're giving yourself as an example, Sarah, you are an engineer. Then we need to decide whether we need to have the city engineer. Is, is that the level of expertise that you need to have on our city's side? Do we want to pay our city engineer to do that role?
And no, I don't think it needs to be the city engineer. I think that typically it would be the, the utility commission liaison would be the appropriate person to be. Or the utilities director of utilities.
We don't have a director of utilities.
So what's David's title?
Works.
Okay, well.
And he does nothing with regard to billing. He's not involved at all.
No, but he understands how the wastewater system works.
Wouldn't it be the chair of the utility commission?
That's also an option.
I, I mean, I understand what you're, what you're trying to get to, Sarah. And I feel like placing that onus on someone who's not, it's not their paid job. For this type of project, it, it doesn't totally make sense with me. If, if it's someone who's supposed to be more than, like, you're describing a project manager on our side. That to me needs to be a paid person. If it's just a point of contact, then it's, it clearly falls on Amber's position. Because she can make sure that Nalisa gets all of the different reports that she needs. That's the question I was asking earlier is, are we, are we required? Like, is, is this contract requiring someone to do a bunch of analysis first? Or is it literally, we are going to hand her the documents that document how much our system costs? And how it functions right now, and then we are depending on her to do the analysis. And Amber's the person who can get documents from Abel. She can ask Ashley for documents. She can get with AWR. So I'm not sure, I mean, unless she doesn't have the bandwidth to do it, I'm not sure why she's not the person. And if, if somebody needs more expertise, then it seems like we would hire the city engineer to do that.
Well, I don't, I don't think it requires the city engineer to do that, because that's then another paid consultant. But I just think that there were significant, significant oversights in the wastewater rate study. That should have been caught had the information been provided to somebody else who was supervising the project on the city's side. And I don't want to have a repeat of that. So we need to have better communication and more transparency in the information that's being used in the evaluation.
So I would add that LUE assignment, add that utility billing functions lying with the public works director is what we did in the past. And that's why we don't have an updated policy. That's why we have incorrect LUE assignments. That's why the ball was dropped. So I, I, as a manager perspective, I don't feel like it's appropriate to lie with the public works director to be the lead point on, on billing, because he's not doing the billing.
All right. I mean, but this is, this is not just a billing issue. Anyway, we just need to have somebody else that is looking over all of this. And the information needs to be clearly provided to maybe everybody on council and the utility commission. To make sure that there is another set of eyes looking at the data that is being evaluated.
Well, and let's don't forget that the utility commission voted to recommend it and council voted. And they felt comfortable with what was presented.
Well, I understand that, but there were also a lot of questions that went unanswered and some really glaring absences of information that should have been caught that weren't. And so I don't want that to happen again.
So Sarah, I've, I've tried to go and ask questions from different angles on this. I've heard your perspective on it several times. I've talked with Amber about it. I've heard what Mike's understanding is of it, and I think that there are some things to work out in how we manage projects. I think you have a, you know, a point that we can always improve in how we work with consultants. And so I think always room for improvement, always room for questions. In this case, though, I, I think that moving forward. The, the issue that I see, which Amber just pointed out, is that we did have a system that was being basically managed by a public works director. And there also were some lacks of, lack of controls on how the money flowed through that. And
Those are not the things I'm objecting to at this point.
I know, but I'm just saying that we had quite a few, there, there are so many different things you could possibly address at the same time. That I'm not thrilled that this was missed the first time in the assessment. But I believe that there might be other things too. And that, and I, so I agree with you on that point, that there could be other things. And so perhaps, one possibility would be Amber, if you wouldn't mind, as y'all are collecting documents, just keep a list of what types of documents are being reviewed. And a folder of the documents, to the extent that they're available for the public to review. If they need to be marked protected so that we understand that there are boundaries for how the data could be used. Or if a council member were to look at it, that there are boundaries on that being passed to other people. Then I think those things need to be there. But if, if what you're asking for, Sarah, is that you, you get to know what documents are used? I, I agree. I would, I would like to know what all the documents are. I would like to be able to see that as well. I think we have really competent people in the utility commission who really want to get into the numbers as much as they can. And they want to understand how our system is working and be helpful. And so if, if we have some, if we have an ability to know what documents were used, great. I, I think that's a step that you're going to have to document what you're sending anyway. And so I think it's just, I, I do know that the utility billing is one area that has a lot of protected data. And so that makes it more complicated to share.
If I could jump in with an idea or a suggestion that may work, or an idea. It, it sounds like, you know, I, I talked to Councilman Hudson during the wastewater rate study and she had some concerns. We can certainly do something to the effect of both in the LUE process and rate process of, when we design, there's a fine balance of how much detail we give in public hearing, public meetings. In respect for your time, I don't want to give you a, a 200 page set of spreadsheets to go through. However, I do want to let you know that anybody who wants to go through 200 pages of spreadsheets, we're absolutely happy to have that. So one suggestion may be, of course, we can't do that with, with a quorum situation. But as we're scheduling meetings with your staff to go through those spreadsheets. And like I said, it's, it's oftentimes in the 150 to 200 page realm. Anybody who wants to go through those and participate, we can certainly communicate those meeting dates. And allow both council as well as your utility commission, anybody that opportunity. If that would help with comfort level. So that, that those questions and those types of things get asked. And anybody who really wants to dig into the numbers can certainly have that opportunity.
That, that sounds great to me, because I think we do have. Do you think we have people who have expertise? I think we have, especially on the utility commission, we have a lot of really smart people who manage financial resources and want to get into the numbers and understand them. And I think that's great. I mean, I think we have, you know, different, different residents who would want to do that and different council members. So I, I would say just, you know, bring on the data as long as it's in a form that we can all look at it.
Sure. We, we just need to make sure that, that there is a lot more input at the beginning of the process than there was the last time around.
Yes.
Because there was almost none the last time around, and that was actually the very first item on the RFP scope was supposed to be a kickoff meeting with council and the utility commission, and that didn't happen. Yes, ma'am, and that's truthfully COVID handicapped our ability to do that greatly back beginning of the year. That being said, however, we can certainly work with you and to have additional meetings. However, you know, like I've said before, we can work with you on however, what level of meetings and involvement that you all want to have and need to have. Absolutely.
Okay, counsel. Any further discussion? You have a motion on the table, not hearing any additional discussion. I'll go ahead and call for the vote. Amy Patillo?
Hi.
Sarah Hudson?
Hi.
Wendy Hundley?
Hi.
Buck Shapiro?
Hi.
Gavin Massengill?
Hi.
All right, motion carries, assuming Nalisa still wants the job. We still have item three, discussion possible action on a water rate study. Are we inclined to take action there, counsel?
I would move to approve the water rate study proposal.
Second.
Motion from Amy, second from Wendy. Do we have discussion, counsel? Going once, going twice?
Okay, Mike, are you looking?
No, I can't, I need to, you know, I apologize. I can't, I've only, the only person that video that pops up on my screen is, is the person speaking. It's kind of a downside, I think, to, to using this platform, but just so you know, you have to make some noise.
I can see everybody, so.
Okay, well, it's my settings.
Then it's, it's helpful to know, because I keep waving my hand. It's like, I will just say something next time. I think that we should postpone the start of the wastewater rate study. I think we are going to have enough on our plate to try and get the LUEs and the, I'm sorry, postpone the water rate study, because I think we're going to have enough on our plate with the, the LUE study and the wastewater rates. And I think we should get those right before we start reassessing the water rates. We just recently did a water rate study. We have a very healthy balance in our water fund. We are not, you know, losing money or behind in that area. And I think we can, I think we can postpone that until we have the other one finalized. That would be my suggestion.
Okay, do we have any other discussion, counsel?
So.
Didn't we determine that we needed, when we adjust the LUEs, that we might need to adjust those other rates at the same time?
Those are wastewater rates. So we do need to adjust the wastewater rates, but that's why I'm saying we need to finish that before we start messing with the water rates.
But the LUE adjustment could affect the water rates, too. Didn't we discuss that a couple of times?
Right now, the LUEs are not a part of the water rates.
Right.
And so adjusting the LUEs will have no impact on our current water rates. So we need to get those right before we look at changing anything on the water rates.
Okay.
So I guess my question would be, I, I, I do want to think about timing on this. And I made the motion to also ask about timing. If, if it was difficult to do the kickoff for the wastewater study, I, I wonder what's
It wasn't, it wasn't difficult. It just wasn't done. Because the kickoff meeting apparently for the wastewater study was done in December last year. So it was done months before the shutdown started. We actually postponed a kickoff meeting with your staff until we had data because uh it helps to analyze and understand the data. We didn't get that data till a couple of months later.
So in this case, with the water rate study, would you be also looking for the data first and then the actual public meeting where we would all get together later?
Yes, yes. Typically, it helps to at least let me have some time with the data to understand what's going on um, and give you some feedback. Um, otherwise, the public meeting is really um, you all telling me, okay, these are our concerns, but I don't have any information to respond to that. Uh, so so typically, we would get the data, spend some time with it, and come and work with you all.
Well, and I think that was part of the problem last time, is that there was some really significant issues that needed to be addressed that were not communicated to you ahead of time. And so they were not even considered until the very, very end of the process and some of it after we'd already voted on parts of it. Um, because that was not information that was provided to you in the beginning. So it doesn't necessarily have to be a public meeting. But the kickoff meeting with the project team, the city staff, the, you know, a member of the utility commission or the liaison or somebody, that needs to happen before you start making recommendations.
Of course, we can do that.
Because there there's there is background and history and, you know, things that should be considered um upfront.
We can certainly do that.
How long will the wastewater rate study take?
The wastewater rate study?
Mm hmm. I mean, the, I mean, sorry, the L U E.
The L U E. Okay, uh, we would probably will have to, it depends on when we get the data. Um, so as soon as I get the data, we probably can start discuss the completion of it um, within about sixty days from the receipt of data. Um, with recommendations. That being said, um, if we want to start with a meeting where I can, really, it's you all and your staff, your commission, your liaison, whomever that can provide me with any background information that you feel is appropriate to share. Um, we would certainly start with that, get that data while the data is being generated from your staff. And then we begin about sixty days from the receipt of data before we could start really looking at the numbers.
Okay. And Amber, are we budgeted for a water rate consultant? I thought I thought we were doing that switching off every other year thing.
Yes, that was the guidance of the council was every look at wastewater one year, water the next year. So that's what we budgeted for. Um, and that's why this is in front of you tonight.
Except we're still doing wastewater.
Well, I I personally, I mean, on the on the timing part, um, I do know that we have a lot of meetings right now that our staff are managing with the comprehensive plan. And so I am a little concerned about the the addition of the the water rate study starting right now and the amount of data collection that would happen. Um, but I don't know if we need to, if we, if we need to, um, like, is this, is this proposal good for several months if we postpone right now and revisit it in a couple of months when we have our comprehensive plan done?
Sure, of course, of course.
I don't know, Amber, do you, Amber, do you have any thoughts on kind of the timing of scheduling all these things?
Yeah, I I wouldn't mind pausing a little bit. We we are pretty um slammed right now, and I could also advertise for the utility billing manager in the meantime and get them hired. And um, this would this would be something I can get off my plate.
At least So so I I I think I would be inclined to to revisit this in three months. Um, seeing where we are on the comprehensive plan and on the utility billing manager hire. Because that's also going to be another constraint of that person getting up to speed and us knowing what our software could do and that, as we just talked about, that being something that could impact the type of rate structures that you would set.
And and a utility billing person should be included as part of the process of going through as rate study also. So that would give us time to hire somebody before we start looking at this again.
Okay.
So I don't know if I need to withdraw my motion so that we're postponing, or if I need to
We could just let it die, uh, if you're comfortable with that. And um,
Well, we have a second. Don't we have to vote on it?
It has been seconded. Um, Amy, you could amend it to um, to postpone as opposed to approve.
Okay, I would amend my motion to postpone uh a decision on the water rate study for three months.
Wendy.
Okay.
All right, um, call vote, Amy.
Hi.
Gavin.
Hi.
Sarah.
Hi.
Buck.
Hi.
Wendy.
Hi.
All right. Hunt, thank you. Nalisa.
My pleasure. You all have a lovely evening. Bye bye.
Thank you.
Um, we will call up uh item four, presentation discussion, possible action on scope of services for easement, location, and identification from W S B Engineering. I understand we have Jay Kennedy uh joining us this evening.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Jay, how are you?
Evening.
Um, tell you what, I'm just going to give you the floor if you're ready to go.
I, uh, Mayor, members of the council, I am ready to go.
Right on. Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you again. It's been a couple of months. And uh, one of the items that I know the council's been talking about um, over the past, I don't, I don't have the timeframe, but one of the issues that arose was you know, really trying to get a better understanding of where you have easements in the community, particularly as it relates to dealing with some of the public improvements, particularly on the drainage side, that you're looking at doing in the future and knowing where and what type of easements you have is pretty important because that can really influence the cost and the timeframe needed to complete projects. So um, we uh spent some time with the city staff talking about what that might look like. And so I've prepared just a couple of images here that I will uh share with the, as soon as Ashley will let me do that, I think, I hope.
I'm going to let you. Um, okay, you should be able to.
There we go. All right, hopefully this will pop up for y'all. I don't know if, is it visible?
Nothing yet. Oh, there it goes.
Okay, thank you. So I will, there we go. Hopefully this won't go one more on me. Okay. So what I wanted to show, I wanted to start with, what is it that the end looks like as you look at an easement identification project? And what would a finished product be? What does that look like? And then outline a process to get there. Um, so the deliverable, and I've got an image from a from a a system, a mapping system, a G I S system for a community that we've done an easement mapping project for. And what you can see are a number of color coded uh, like a color coded scheme to say, here's a drainage easement, here's a water easement, and they're physically included on a map. Um, what this is at the end is a web-based G I S system. And the and the thing that's really important about that for for your community is that as you work through identifying where your easements are, you are going to create a base map using Travis County or City of Austin data plus data that we literally have to digitize from documents. And you have the start of a G I S system for the city that you can build on. Okay, so if you want to start looking at converting your existing water main or sewer or drainage system maps and and including them as part of your G I S system, you can do that because this system will be in place. It is cloud hosted. It is not something where we hold or own or otherwise have any rights over the data. The data is all the cities. It's all, again, hosted in the cloud. Actually, it's hosted through what's called um uh, Arc G I S online. That is a product from a company called Ezri. Ezri has been around, or Ezri's been around since the late sixties. But G I S has been something they jumped into probably in the eighties. And they are really a worldwide, well-known uh G I S system provider. So that information is all held. What we're doing for you is helping you manipulate it and get it in place and get that data where you need it. And then you can access it from there. And it's all um, an online access. So it is, all you need is an internet browser. So this type of information can be looked at in the field on a phone. It can be looked at on an iPad. Uh, you can access it from anywhere as long as you have credentials to log into that, to log into the system, which the city would have. And so uh, really, the way that we've seen communities have success, or what they're really looking to do is know where are the easements? And and maybe these aren't standard lot line easements that are included with a plat. I mean, you can be drawing three thousand easements if you did that, and that could be an awful lot, but it's also possible to do it. Um, they can be classified by the type, which allows you to then color code them or search or 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 look at them specifically. And then lastly, you can attach relevant documents. So one of the things that we would need to do to work on this project for you is gather documents that you already have like plats or easement documents. We need to scan all those and then give you back your copies. Those scans can be literally attached then to the to the uh system. So if you click on an easement, the document can come up, you can print it, you can share it. Uh, you can reference it, whatever it is you need with that. So that's, I wanted to start with, that's what you're going for. That's kind of the vision. And then really, from our perspective, the way to get there is to phase it. You could go all in and say, okay, we want to hire a title company and look at every single property in the city and gather title documents. The the cost of that would be astounding. I don't think that that that's that's a direction I would recommend. Uh, but in talking with the staff, you do have a fair amount of information on file over at the city hall. And so you can start with base mapping that is available. Travis County, they have excellent data. We can gain access to that and get that included as the base map for your system. And then after we acquire the documents, we literally have to digitize those. We have to draw them. There's, there's no way around it. Uh, they have to get drawn on that map. They will have data attached to them, to that drawing, the type. Again, you can attach documents. And then once we get through that first step, and we, at this point, we don't know how many easements that is, we can only make an educated guess. Once we have the documents that you have handy, we get them digitized, we come back and share with the council. Here's, here's how much data we were able to find. Here's what the map looks like today. And then depending on the needs and where you might have holes in the data, where you might have priority projects coming up, there are, there is a deeper dive that can be done. There can be a visit to Travis County to acquire documents. Um, there can be title research if you really need it. And you can even get to the point where you actually go out in the field and survey it. Um, those are not things that we're including right now. That is, that's going all the way to the extreme, and I think you're going to find that you'll get an awful lot of data with what you already have. Okay, so that, that's the recommended approach. And to do that, figuring two hundred and fifty to three hundred easements, which we're, again, we're estimating that right now uh, to for somebody to take the time to draw that, to get the base map set up, et cetera, we're estimating a fifteen to twenty-two, five, twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollar cost. Again, that's really the time of somebody drawing and and setting up the map. Uh, I mentioned the cloud hosted uh data software that's through uh Ezri. There is an annual software licensing fee that doesn't go to us. That's going to Ezri. And that's in the five hundred to seven hundred and fifty dollar range. That's, that gives you the cloud that they provide, and then that data is in there. You can host it on your own on a, on a network. Uh, we don't recommend that. That's that, that's quite a bit of maintenance. And unless you have somebody who's going to maintain that data, that can that can get to be an issue for you. And so that's why these solutions uh where you can use a cloud-based uh host are something that we recommend. So with that, that's, hopefully I've answered at least some questions that you might have. Uh, beyond that, I'm available for additional questions, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Jay. Um, yeah, I do have a few questions, uh, most notably, um, who handles the uh the updates uh for Ezri? That's going to be a G I S specialist. It's going to be generally building uh a lot of those uh a lot of those files. Um, I guess it's a shape file, I think they use. How do, uh, who's going to be building those guys out? Uh, say we get a a new easement. Uh, can you walk us through how that process works?
Absolutely. Great question, Mayor. Uh, initially, we will develop the 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 map that we're talking about now. But if there are new easements, uh, yes, you you would either need to get those, um, a lot of times, depending on how you acquire the easement, um, you, you could either have to, you you might have to have somebody draw that. You might have to have somebody do that. That's something that we can do, or, you know, there are other folks out there, other consultants that can draw that in as well. Um, in some cases, you might be able to get it digitally and be able to pop it right in there. And then that timeframe is very short. It's a half hour to an hour of somebody's time to draw an easement in there, depending on the complexity. So it's not a real high cost if you're getting one or two at a time.
And when you're saying drawing in, you're you're talking about basically entering uh, you're entering a meets and bounds description, yeah, kind of a deep plotter that's going to spit this out? Or are you talking about actual tools that allow you to draw the polygons themselves? Do you know?
It it's both. We do need to, uh, we do need to use the meets and bounds to draw that in. Uh, and then it winds up being a polygon or an actual shape that we can then attach data to.
Does your proposal have uh kind of the rates that would go along with that uh, that level of maintenance as we move forward?
Um, Mayor, I did not include that. I did not include that, no.
Do you have a, can you give us kind of an estimate on, you know, if we're dropping a couple hours worth of work? Let's, let's, I assume you you're talking, you're talking in terms of of hours uh for billables. Is that fair?
Yes, sir. Um, if if it was uh something the city was interested in, we could find a way to develop a per easement fee as well. So that can be done. But it's, we're talking on the order of a hundred to two hundred dollars, maybe. I mean, it, if it's a one hour a time and somebody's at a hundred dollars an hour, and I'm just throwing out, giving you a ballpark, Mayor, and could be a hundred dollar undertaking. And if you get four or five at a time, there's some efficiencies there, but um, once the map is set up, the time involved is not substantial.
Yeah, I I just, I don't believe we have anybody on our staff now that's familiar uh with the uh with Arc G I S or an Ezri platform or or products. Um, you know, those, finding those folks are, it's not too difficult. You you're you're absolutely right there. Uh, as far as the license holder, is the city the license holder with Ezri or you guys?
Um, the city is.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you, Jay. Those are my questions. Thank you, Jay. You have any additional questions, Council?
I have one. Go ahead, go ahead, Gavin.
Go ahead. I'll go next.
Oh, so I was driving during the utility commission when you did this presentation. So I wasn't, I, I didn't hear every single comment that the utility commission made, but majority. And there was a question asked about kind of the longevity of this software, like what, what would happen if the software went away, right? And I, I think that was, it was a fair question, but probably one that is less, is less important. It's just the, the, the question I had was if we didn't do a GIS based system, what would be the alternative to that?
Boy, Mayor and Council, I, if you don't create a, some kind of a digital map where you can house the data, the alternative would be to use an AutoCAD map, let's say. The challenge with that is it's hard to attach any data to it. And I think the beauty of a system like this, even if you do nothing else with it, you don't put your sewer system or water system maps or anything else in it, is it's got that level of intelligence. So there is an alternative. I just don't know if that's what you're looking for.
I don't, I don't think it is. I, I do think that the GIS, I think, will be something that will probably help with a lot of the different issues that we're working on. I just, it, the, part of the reason I had the question is I wondered why our engineering firms haven't already created a GIS of our city. And I, and so I just wondered, I wonder, I wonder what, like, we, we, we get all these maps that are pretty static and flat. Maybe that's to save us money, but I'm, I, I think that if we move to a GIS format, then we're going to be able to layer the, the maps. And I think that functionality will then provide our public works department with better data than they have right now. And probably better than a bunch of individual flat maps that they have to pull out every time there's a water leak.
And, and arguably, Amy, a, a large part of the argument is that that moving to this kind of platform ultimately saves you, or the organization. As you correctly pointed out, you're talking about a static map after static map. Instead of starting from scratch, you kind of have a dynamic, dynamic platform that, that allows you some level of interactivity.
But I did wonder why we haven't done it before and if, if this is, if we need this much. But I, I think that there's a lot of reasons that justify it.
I think at one point, we were offered a free beta test of a GIS platform. But last, we feared, and we did not take it. So Esri, I, I think Jay hit the nail on the head. Esri is a, a leading product. It is. It's not going anywhere. And if you were to walk into most other jurisdictions around us, you're going to find that they're using a similar platform. And I believe Austin has three or four GIS experts on staff. If you were to walk into TCAD, they have a host as well as any appraisal district would. I don't, I am, just to be very clear, not recommending that we have an expert on staff. I don't think our needs fluctuate that, that frequently once this is set up. I think it's something with a modest bit of maintenance. Perhaps it's something that Carrie might be able to get trained up pretty readily and easily to handle.
My, my question, Jay, was, so that base map data that you, that you get from the county, do they charge you for that data? And if so, is that, is that in your, is that in the cost estimate?
Councilmember Madison Gill, it's, it's our understanding that that data is available without cost. If, if for some reason we find out that there's a substantial cost to that, we'll stop right there before and check back in with the council before expending those, you know, expending those funds. But we don't expect any cost related to that.
Good. That's surprising, but very good. So maybe it'll be the only thing the county doesn't charge us for.
Well, so just to give you a heads up, Jay, I think they, I think they, you might get charged modestly. I want to say most counties kind of hit you with like a, you know, ten, twenty, maybe fifty bucks for the data to be delivered. It's usually contains some level of parcel data that coincides with the, the appraisal information. You should be able to check what you do want, what you don't perhaps, to add in the fields for your map, depending on. Well, I guess if it's hosted in the cloud, we're not worried about server capacity necessarily. But the, one side of that, as lots change, right? So it's not just your base map can change also, right? Not just your, the, the, the forms that you're overlaying. So what you want to do, or what we as a city, if we do go this route, is we'll also probably want to adopt some level of process. Say every quarter, six months, annually, whatever it is, order this data to update our base map. That would account for anybody replating, subdividing, et cetera. Is that a fair statement, Jay?
Yes, sir, it is. And the city itself will be aware of any subdivisions or lot line adjustments. And so you're aware of those things. And then ultimately, once that gets through the county's process and they update their whole base map, then that can flow through into your electronic base map. I've found that that very, the lag time varies. In different counties, sometimes it's very short, sometimes it's very long, but it's wise to update that periodically.
Amber, is this something, Amber, is this something that Carrie, is this going to sort of live in her world?
She will, you know, obviously be getting most of the information for, for this. Yes, they will live in her world. It will live in David's world. Because, you know, any, any drainage projects we want to do going forward will have that information. Carrie will be able to access that.
We'll probably have.
Questions? Sorry, Mayor. I know one of our residents had a question, which was if the city decided to part ways with WSB, what interface is appropriate for the city to use to access their information?
Good question. Jay, I'll let you handle it. But in Esri license, or that, you guys don't house the portal. Because we have the license, right? So it's forever for us. Is that correct?
Yeah, Mayor, that, that's correct. Our role is to build, is to build the easement database, not to create, own, house data of any kind.
And so we would actually have access to this through an Esri portal? Is that?
No, sir. It, it would be through a standard web browser.
And it would be housed. So how do I get into, how do I get into it? I guess, go through my web browser? And yeah, where am I going?
Good question. Typically, there'd be a login. And so then the city would have credentials to be able to log into that system with username, password, you know, very standard types of things. And then you can get in and view and to some degree manipulate the mapping.
And that's, and that's that portal. So that, where I'm entering in my credentials, that's on, that's on Esri's site or? Okay. Thank you.
But Esri is just the plat, or you're saying, Mayor, that they're just the platform? So they don't own it either, correct?
So the only problem you're going to have is if Esri ever goes away.
Right.
Right. And, and so what, what Jay and his firm do are build, they're doing the legwork to accumulate this data and build this out for us so that we have this, this dynamic GIS system that is, lives in Esri's cloud, right? And we have full credentialed access and we can grant that or deny that to whoever the city chooses. Is that an accurate summary, Jay?
Yes, sir. There, there is, there are some, there is some variations to the licensing fee. Like if you wanted to have fifty people having access to it, that licensing fee might get a little bit higher. But within reason, you know, that's, that's how I got that range because we just made an estimate to how many people thought you would really look at it.
It's also, also true that we could add additional features. Is that fair? By increasing that licensing fee? So if, I, Esri I know has floodplain information. I believe they provide contour and elevations and all kinds of fun stuff that may or may not be accessible under our license. Is that, is that right?
Yes, sir. If you, if you added your water system, your sewer system, and now you start putting in a lot of other intelligent systems that they, they have a sliding scale for the licensing fee. But in no case is it, you know, twenty, thirty thousand. It's not that type of thing. We're, we're.
Unless you're working in the oil and gas space.
Yeah, then, then you're, yeah, yeah, there may be, they maybe have a little higher data needs than the city does.
But I assume that there's a way for us to do an external backup of some sort once it's built. Is that right?
You, you certainly, you certainly can do that with the files themselves. The raw data you could put on a city server and it would also be in the cloud being accessed. So you could have both.
My only other comment, Jay, is that you may find some really wonky stuff.
Guaranteed.
And one example I would give you is that there was an easement that covered six properties, including my own, that none of our title companies found of the six properties right here. But my neighbor happened to find it when he was going and doing a deep dive after he purchased a, an empty lot over here. But the city still had an easement that would have allowed the city to put a roadway through all of our properties. And the city vacated that. It was like four or five years ago. So it no longer is there. But our, all of our title companies had missed it. And so I do, I do anticipate that you will find some interesting things.
Which actually, it, and I appreciate that, Amy. That does invite a really critical question. How, how are you guys set up to resolve, you know, resolve these kinds of issues as they crop up? Because they will. Which is actually why, a large part of why we're discussing undergoing this process in this manner.
Mayor, members of the council, the, in our, that's one of the reasons why we've looked at this in a phased way is what do we got that, okay, here's, here's easements that we can find. These are pretty easy to locate. We've got these documents. Now you look at them on a map and you see some holes. Okay, so now how are we going to get those filled in? Now you need to think about, maybe there's a title company that has to get involved or something else. If the council wants to know whether or not there's easements on that property. And then, once that, those documents are available, we have right away acquisition specialists, surveyors, people of that nature on our staff that can get in and really dig deep into those documents if it's necessary.
Okay.
Well, all of our friends who are, have insured the titles in our city might be feeling a little scared right now. Because it was a big one.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, are you sure you want to go out and look and where, for where all the easements are?
We do need to know where they are, but we're going to find some wonky stuff potentially. That's the only way I know how to describe it. I, I'm sure there's a more technical term for the easements that lots of title companies have missed over the years, but that's what I've got for it.
We've got literally found one today.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, I would expect that. I, I worked in a community for a number of years that was plotted in the eighteen nineties. And I was trying to deal with where roads are, where this is. I, I mean, it, yeah, we expect it. We've done these types of projects for, I want to say, the range of fifty to sixty communities, not just easements, but a lot of other utilities and things of that nature. So we've seen a lot. And I hope I'm surprised. Or maybe I don't. I'm not sure.
Well, so just, just so that folks understand, the, kind of the catalyst behind this conversation. We've undertaken some comprehensive planning, as, as we noted earlier. But even prior to that, we started looking at drainage and utility concerns generally. And what we realized pretty readily was that we can talk in terms of drainage fixes. But we don't really understand kind of what the city's slate of assets are with regards to right away easements, et cetera. So that, that's just for anybody listening. That's the catalyst behind this. This is, was considered to be a logical next step in, as far as trying to, trying to unravel that ball. But in any case, Jay, I appreciate all of your time this evening. Council, do we have any other thoughts, questions, concerns? Not hearing any. Jay, I'm going to ask you to, to go and have a pleasurable evening. Enjoy yourself.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council.
Council, we don't have a, I didn't see a proposal attached here. Is that right?
It was sent out.
Not attached.
Okay, so it's, it's out via email, but not attached.
Correct.
Okay, has everybody had a chance to review it? Obviously, I have missed that. My apologies there.
Mayor, everybody missed it. It just came to me at five thirty this evening. So.
Okay.
Oh, just, that was for, that's for item eight. Carrie?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sure. Yeah, this was the proposal. I think it went out on Friday. I can double check and send it again.
Okay. Thank you. Well, Council, you know, it's, it's up to us, or I guess more like, more properly stated, it's up to you to decide whether or not you want to undertake any action at this, at this juncture.
So I, looking at the scope of service, I felt pretty comfortable with the scope of service other than the question that you asked, Mayor, about ongoing maintenance is not in here.
Yeah, that's, yeah, sorry, I have seen this.
So just to, since it's not attached, just to make it clear, what we're talking about is there would be a scope of surfaces that would include documentation and research and then easement plotting. And then there's a section about the budget and the investment. And that phase one of the easement mapping would be between fifteen thousand and twenty-two, five, assuming two hundred and fifty to three hundred easements. And then the ArcGIS online license would be about five hundred to seven fifty annually. And then we don't have a quote yet for the maintenance. And to the extent that there might be a fifty or something, some small fee from Travis County, I don't know whether we bear that or the consultant bears that at this point. So it seems like, Mayor, that we could, we still have to have some sort of contract that we review. Like there's one more step. I, I would feel comfortable making a motion to move to whatever that step is. But I want to make sure I articulate what that next legal step is. So I don't know if you.
That's fair. Obviously, and obviously, I guess what we'd be looking at right now is if the council was interested in, in pursuing this, perhaps the right, the right course of action then is, is to direct staff and me to, to take a peek at a, or start working through a potential contract to bring back for review and approval.
And, and do we have this budgeted already?
That was going to be my question.
Sorry, Gavin. I should have held my. Sorry, Gavin. I should have held my powder off that.
Good. You're good. Jump in.
We do not.
This has not been budgeted for this year.
So we go.
I'm sorry. I didn't know. I'm cutting you off. We're going to ask the same question. What, where would it come out of, Amber?
Uh, I think it could be charged to, uh, possibly the Drainage Fund and Water and Wastewater, uh, maybe streets. Probably not streets for easements, but, um, yeah, drainage water and wastewater is what I would say.
And maybe a piece out of a few of them. If you wanted to.
Right, right.
To not, not throw us too far off on our numbers.
Right. I think we could easily absorb among the, amongst the three.
We're, we're in the process of doing rate studies for our water and wastewater. We start throwing more charges into the budget than what we have in there already. That's going to potentially throw things off. The drainage makes sense because that's the primary area that is going to impact.
So I think I have a motion. I don't have it typed out yet, so it may be slow and disjointed. But I would move to authorize the city administrator and mayor to uh, negotiate a contract with WSB. Um, pursuant to the scope of services. And also including maintenance to bring back to the council next meeting. And also to bring back a proposed budget amendment to, to fund the contract.
We have a motion. Do we have a second, council?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This was presented to, uh, was it utility?
Yes.
And how did utility feel about it? They recommended?
They recommended it.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion, council? Not hearing any. Sorry, I'm looking. There we go. Just pulled up your gallery. Not seeing any hands either. Fantastic. Okay, in that case, Sarah Hudson? Wendy Hundley?
Hi.
Amy Patillo?
Hi.
Gavin Massengill?
Hi.
Buck Shapiro?
Hi.
All right, the eyes have it. Uh, Amber, uh, we can get to work on that, uh, probably end of this week, maybe Monday next week. Is that all right?
You bet.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Uh, we'll move to the consent agenda.
I moved a passage of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Not hearing any comments, so.
I have one comment.
Okay.
I just wanted to say thank you to Ashley for tracking all of the comments and all of the motions that were made with the tree ordinance.
Yeah, I looked at that and I was impressed.
I was super impressed. And I also realized that in the future, I, there was one more step I could have taken to make the meeting go more smoothly and for note-taking purposes, which would have been to do a last final sheet of what I was going to propose, um, when I got to the meeting. So I appreciate her doing that note-taking this time, and I'll try to be even more organized next time.
No worries. It worked out great.
Okay, um, no other discussion. Uh, Sarah Hudson?
Hi.
Wendy Hundley?
Hi.
Amy Patillo?
Hi.
Gavin Massengill?
Hi.
Buck Shapiro?
Hi.
Eyes have a consent agenda passed. We'll call bottom seven. Discussion possible action regarding an, an appeal of the determination of the building official to not permit a curb cut for the parking pad on Edge Grove Drive for forty-eight thirty Rollingwood Drive. Um, Carrie, I'm going to, uh, open it up to you, but council, just for a refresh, uh, we had asked for additional information, uh, to come back, uh, with regards specifically to the, uh, I think the drive as well as, uh, the no parking, uh, that was, there's a no parking sign. Fair amount of conversation. If I've missed anything there for the recap, please forgive me. Um, Carrie, uh, can you give us some color, uh, on, uh, what materials, uh, were provided? Zach, thanks for joining us.
Hi, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, um, a couple of things I requested, uh, from Zach's architects that they go back and provide better detail on the parking pad, and they have done that. That is, uh, in the packet. And there was a question about from what point to what point are the measurements shown? Were those, uh, taken? And those measurements are from the planter box to the property line. For your reference. Uh, we did go, I asked Public Works to go and measure the distance between the stop sign and the no parking sign. And that distance is, um, further than I expected. I think it's.
Hundred and thirteen feet.
Yes, hundred and thirteen feet. Um, so that, that's the information that, um, I have for you all that you asked for from last time. Um, just for reference, the state parking restrictions for how close to a stop sign you can park is, uh, thirty-three feet. So there would be room on the street between the no parking sign and the stop sign for a vehicle. Have any questions for me?
I have a clarification.
Go ahead, Amy.
So my understanding is that, that the, this process started because the applicant requested a driveway, a circle drive that connected to two different streets. And that required going to planning and zoning.
So this began, I received this plan for parking pad first. Just for clarification, I denied this plan.
For the parking pad alone?
For the parking pad alone.
Um, so. And why did you deny it for the parking pad alone?
Uh, on the grounds that the code enumerates single ingress egress points and circular driveways, but it does not detail whether or not you're allowed to have multiple non-contiguous points of ingress egress.
Carrie, will you, will you point to the code? Because I spent some time looking through this today to try to get there with you. And I am not interpreting it the same way. Um, uh, I, I do see we have, um, we have section twenty-eight dash seventy, driveways with more than one curb cut. And that is circular driveways or continuous driveways with more than one curb cut. Um, that they're allowed, provided that they, um, are on the same street. But if they happen to have an entrance on one street and then they exit onto another street, then that is what triggers you having to go to planning and zoning to get a variance. Um, I did some research on this just to see different properties in our neighborhood that have a curb cutter driveway on more than one side of the property on a corner lot. I found six Randolph Place, one Randolph Place. One Randolph Place, place was built in twenty twenty. Five oh three Riley was built in two thousand and eleven. Four oh six Farley Trail was built in nineteen fifty-six. Twenty-four oh one Hatley was built in two thousand and ten. Um, twenty-five hundred Hatley was built in twenty twenty. Twenty-six hundred Hatley was built in twenty seventeen, and they just had a new curb cut that was put in on Riley this year. Um, and they have another one on Hatley. One oh three Vale, uh, was built in two thousand and four. Three oh four Vale was built in nineteen eighty-two. Four hundred Riley was built in two thousand and four. Twenty-four oh nine Vance was built in two thousand and nineteen. So we have um, allowed uh, multiple driveways on properties, um, since our code was adopted. It's been standing since nineteen ninety-five. So, um, for me, I, that I had a problem with denying, with this having been denied on that, on those grounds, because we allow it for other properties. And my concern with the, with driveway was more of the depth and whether or not a vehicle could actually fit in that driveway and not be parked in our right of way, in that ten-foot right of way where we have, um, possibly a sidewalk in the future when we do the Edge Grove improvements for the low water crossing. And it would have to have a variance to build something in the right of way. If it was a permanent parking structure, then that would be something we would need to give them a variance on, that we would want a car parked in our riding, right of way all the time. So that's, that's where I see the problem with the parking pad, not necessarily that there's an, another curb cut. We have lots of curb cuts in our city, lots of different sides of the properties.
So, um, I'll, I'll start by saying that I don't believe that Lauren with K-Freeze or I, you know, working together since summer of last year have approved any multiple, um, non-contiguous curb cuts. I would have to go back and look to see, make sure that nothing that was approved, you know, that there wasn't one that was supposed to be abandoned uh, that was not, but.
Well, will you read to me that code that you're citing? Because I don't find that, um, what you're saying in the code. So it'd help if I knew what section of code you're looking at.
Sure, I'm, I'm, I had an email exchange between she and I that was in the last council packet, and I'm trying to get that in front of me right now. Um, it, but it's basically, while I get that in front of me, the our determination is that because it is not, uh, expressly allowed, it is denied. Now, I understand that that's not necessarily consistent with what, how Mike Alexander ruled on this. Um, but our feeling on it was that because the code was specific about the requirements for single curb cuts, um, about with double curb cuts, that if it was the spirit of the code to allow multiple non-connected points of ingress egress, that it would have been laid out in the code. Um, and, and perhaps that is not the feeling um, of the council, and that's not what is best for the city. But if that's the case, then we need a better definition of driveway, and we need to look at if that is important to us or not. Um, I, I can see there being some traffic concerns with having, you know, multiple different driveways. I could see, you know, I don't know if there's any engineering concerns with having multiple curb cuts on our curbs, um, you know, in excess of, of, you know, single or double, you know, what's already explained. Um.
Carrie, this is, are you referring to section twenty-eight dash seventy-four, which says circular driveways or continuous driveways with more than curb cut shall be allowed only on one street on corner lots? This includes driveways that cut across corner lots from one to the intersection street?
There's another, uh, part of the code referencing driveways um, that I'm feverishly working to get in front of me and um, I do think that there is an issue with this particular parking pad, like you said, Wendy, uh, that if a if certain size vehicles were parked in that parking pad, they would extend into our right of way or extend across a potential future sidewalk.
Um, I looked at the International Building Code requirements for a driveway, and they're required to be at least nine feet deep. Um, and to me, that would be nine feet deep, but then you would also have the, um, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't build that driveway in the right of way. It has to be on the property. Because you can't build a structure for parking in the right of way. That's, and so as far as I could tell in the drawing, um, it wasn't labeled, you know, where the property line was or what, where that sixteen-foot measurement was, but it did look like, and, and I drove by the property too. It looks like it's sixteen feet from the curb, which would be ten feet of city right of way and six feet of yard space for the parking pad. Is that right? Mr. Mills?
Uh, I know it's sixteen feet at the shortest from the property line, but I, I wasn't, I wasn't sure exactly where we were supposed to be measuring from.
Yeah, I, Carrie asked, you know, if what we got was sufficient. And I said, for me, I would like to see that ten-foot setback or the ten-foot, um, right of way on there, so we could see where the ten-foot right of way is. And then also, um, you know, how much property you have to build the parking pad, because I, I still can't see that from the drawing that you submitted.
Yeah, so, so I clarified with the architects and what that sixteen feet, that's from the planter box to the property line. So we have a ten-foot right of way that it would extend into that.
So I guess that's what I can't tell is where is the property line and where is the ten-foot right of way? Because it's not labeled on the the drawing. Unless I'm not seeing it.
I, it, it doesn't show it. It doesn't give a, a measurement from, from the property line to the, the edge of the street.
That's still what I, what I don't know, and that would be the, the issue for me, uh, if I, if we have to make a, a determination on this for an appeal to the city council, whether or not you should be allowed to have a parking pad there. I, I don't think that we prohibit having a curb cut in another driveway, according to our code, the way that I've read it. But I do think that we have, you have to comply with the International Building Code for the depth of the driveway, and it has to be, uh, the, the vehicle would have to be parked out of the right of way. There'd have to be room for that. So if that isn't something that we could make a determination on, I wouldn't make a motion to approve it at this time because we still don't have all that information.
Oh, so from the information received from the architect stated that the property line to the planter box at its shortest point is just over sixteen feet, which means that it would not conform with the International Building Code.
So that could be a determination that's, is that what the determination is from the building department on this, so that we're appeal, that they're appealing? Because the appeal of, of whether or not they can have a curb cut, I think they could have a curb cut. They could have another driveway because that is what our city has always had.
That is information that, that we had not been considered, uh, originally. Because the way the drawings were, it wasn't clear. Um, I went back and I just found my memo from the last council meeting. council meeting. And it's section 28 dash 68 and 28 dash 70. And I stayed with therefore, because the code gives specific guidelines for single curb cuts and for driveways with more than one curb cut, it is my determination that the code does not support numerous non-contiguous her pets. So it's section 28 dash 68 and 870.
The 28 dash 68 says residential driveway aprons and driveway curbs. It says each residential driveway apron and driveway curb shall be constructed of reinforced concrete at least six inches in thickness in accordance with section 28 dash 64. Each driveway apron shall begin at the street gutter and extend at least four feet away from the street. The crown of such driveway apron shall be at least as high as the street curb nearest the apron. The curving on the driveway apron shall extend in a curb and having a radius of at least five feet and beginning at the street curving. So that doesn't say anything about not allowing a continuous driveway. Then section 28 dash 70 says driveways with more than one curb cut. So that's a driveway with more than one curb cut. Goes on to say circular driveways or continuous driveways with more than one curb cut. So that's looking at a driveway on the same street that's circular because it has two entrance points or a continuous driveway. They are allowed provided that all other aspects of the building permit are in order and full compliance is made with all applicable city ordinances. And the following, one, the center lines of the driveway are no closer to each other than 35 feet. So they have to be 35 feet apart. The edge of any resulting driveway is not closer to the side of the property line than five feet. The grade of the driveway is such that it provides positive drainage to the street, or if that is not possible due to topography, drainage structures or grading landscaping is provided to ensure that drainage from the driveway does not cause flow into another property in such a manner as to cause damage to that property. And then four circular driveways or continuous driveways with more than one curb cut shall be allowed on only one street. That means they have to be on the same street. They can't go to another street on corner lots. This includes driveways that cut across corner lots from one street to the intersection street. And that is where you have to go get a variance. If you look at 28 dash 62 variances says, A, any variance to the requirements specified in 28 dash 70 must be to submitted and approved by the planning and zoning commission of the cities. And then B, a person requesting permission to construct a curb or gutter who is denied by the building official may submit a request for variance to the city council after retreat, receiving determination from the building official under this section. When submitting such requests, the applicant to the city council shall include a written statement stating the reasons why he feels that the building officials determination should not apply to this particular situation and why the variance should be granted. So I don't have that letter. I don't think that we should deny it based on not on having a driveway on one side and a driveway on the other side when we allow two curb cuts on one side of the street. Um, and so if, if this is being denied purely because it's not deep enough, then does the city council need to make a determination of that? I mean, that's where we need direction from the building official to tell us and we need the drawings to show what the actual depth is, which we don't have.
Well, I, I, I'm curious is this this, uh, site plan is to scale. So I know y'all talk about a 10 foot right of way. So between the curb and the property line is 14 feet. So if I know it's not labeled, but I just measured or we could get it labeled. So if there, there's 10 feet of right of way and my property line is 14 feet from the curb, what, what's up with the four feet in between? Can you, can you tell me that, Carrie? Can I use that as a parking?
Yes. Yes, you can use what is outside of the right of way to park.
Okay. So it's not necessarily just to the parts to the property line. So I, I don't know why, I don't know why the architects just measured it to the property line. So really I, I, I just need to have this labeled better because if, if we, if we measured it from the planter to the to the right of way, I'm looking at 20 feet.
That's not what your architect detailed to me. Which I can provide to everyone. That was distance was the planter box to the property line. Which would only give you our right of ways 10 feet. And you cannot park in that 10 feet.
Yeah, the, the drawing I'm looking, was that in an email, Carrie? Or was that?
It was in an email that's, I believe.
Well, I think, I think part of the discrepancy maybe it looks like the property line is not actually going to the curb, which is odd to me. Like there's this no man's land between the property line and the curb.
Exactly. And it's, and it's 14 feet from, from the property line to the curb.
Cause we're, because we're all used to talking about the property line going to the curb. And then, and then we have 10 feet of the, of the right of way from the curb back. But, but the way I'm looking at this drawing it and if it's correct, it looks like there's this no man's land between the property line and the curb.
Right. So, so Gavin's looking at my site plan on page 51 and, and the measurements that the architect mentioned to Carrie are, are labeled right there. And it, it, it is, it shows it's the distance from the planter box to the property line.
Yeah, 16 feet one, 18 two.
Correct. And then again, it's the scale. And when I measure from the, from the property line to the curb, we're, we're looking at 14 feet.
Carrie, do you have the plat on this property? Cause that might help us to figure out where the street is, where the right of way is and where the property line is. Um, cause that I think that's the confusing part, Mr. Mills, is this is just not labeled. So it, 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 it reads very confusing. Gavin's point, it does have a no man's land sort of feel to it. But when you drive by it, it also doesn't feel like it's 30 feet, um, from the street to your planter box.
I'll agree with that.
But you know, I know it can be, you know, looks can be deceiving on how deep something is. And so that's why I wanted to know what are the actual measurements? Cause I, I, I'm not going to go on your property and measure your property, but I certainly can't rule on this if you haven't provided the measurements to us. So we know for sure.
Yeah, I, I understand. I, I
In fairness, he feels like he has provided it because he's only measuring to his property line. And so if from his property line to the curb is not his property, then I, I understand where the, where they were coming from on it. But we need to get to the bottom of that of if, if that is truly his property line that is, you know, 20 feet away from the, or 14 feet away from the curb, we need to understand. Well, that sounds like one of those wonky things we were talking about a minute ago on the GIS.
There you go. It's also if, if his property line is 20 feet from the curb, then the city has 10 feet of right of way uh, on his property line, according to his plat. So his, his house is only six feet away from the city right of way. So that can't be right. It wouldn't make sense. It, that's why this drawing doesn't make sense to me. Like, and we probably need to see the plat. Maybe next time, could you bring back the plat? I'm so sorry, Mr. Mills, but we need to see the plat probably. And then like actual to scale measurements of, of where the curb is, where the 10 foot setback is. And then where your property is to the planter box. And that would be helpful.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I, I'm a lot more clear on the requirements for it. So yeah, I'd be happy to provide all of that stuff.
Well, I have a procedural question. Sorry, Mr. Mills. I didn't mean to talk over you. So, um, Charlie, uh, I know that you like to avoid us asking you questions during the meeting, but, um, have, have you, where, where, at what point in time, like, I mean, I'm, I'm seeing where Carrie has come up with her interpretation of this section and is applying it. It doesn't seem to me to align with other properties that have been built around the neighborhood within the last five years. And I don't believe the code section has been changed. So at what point, Charlie, do you weigh in on, on, on what the building, how the building official is interpreting our code?
I, I typically don't. It's not my role to weigh in on, you know, how the building was interpreting the code. It sounds like in this circumstance, though, the city council agreement with the way the building official is interpreting the code, which is fine. That can happen.
Oh, can you speak up, Charlie?
Can you hear me? Is that better? Is that better?
A little bit.
Okay. I'm not sure where my microphone, I'm not in my typical office. I'm not sure where my microphone is on this thing. Um, um, so it sounds like city council is in a disagreement with how this code is being interpreted. Am I accurate in that assessment?
I, I don't agreement with it. I don't.
Yeah, I don't agree.
Okay. So to the extent the city council tonight says we're in disagreement with how this is being interpreted by the building official. We would request that the property owner go back and provide the appropriate information as we've requested here tonight. And then have, I hate to say it, but the appropriate process now would be to have the building official reassess um, with all the new information and make another determination. And it would then have, if it was denied again, it would have to go back through, you know, the P and Z process. Cause now we're talking about a different issue than what was originally denied in the story.
Okay. Cause I, I felt this way last time, but I was trying to ask questions and see if we can get some resolution. Looked at it again. I, I really, I feel like one of the issues is there hasn't been an evaluation of whether this is even a two code parking space. I, so I, I don't know that I, I, I don't, I don't agree with necessarily the interpretation right now of they're not being, you're not being allowed to have one driveway on one side of your lot, on a corner lot and one on the other. Um, I don't think they can connect. That's clear. The two streets can't connect. You'd need a variance for that, but, uh, at the same time, it even, even if, if the, so if the building official, if we decide to override the building official, we still don't know whether this is a driveway that's up to code. And I feel like we were pretty clear last time that that's what we needed information about. So um, that's where I am. But I also am wondering how we create a process that doesn't put other people in this cycle. Because I appreciate Mr. Mills being patient as we've tried to work through this, but I also and, and there's some things about the way that the, that the drawings are in these plans that we have that also have made me wonder about whether the city, I, I've been wondering the whole time if the city owns this giant swath of property around here. Cause that could definitely be part of a drainage solution.
Yes. Yeah. Well, what, what we ended up, what we labeled differently from last time was the, the distance from the planter box to the, the property line. So I, you know, I, I really didn't know about the, the 10 foot right of way. And then this, the, I knew about the 10 foot right of way, but the space in between that and the part and the, uh, property line, I wasn't, I wasn't sure we could utilize that. So we can definitely make adjustments to that.
I do think we need to see the flat on that. This is bizarre that this property line doesn't go to the curb.
Oh, Zach just sent me the plat and I have just asked Ashley if she could send it out to everybody. It's, um, original timberline terrace subdivision plat. So it's not, I don't think it's going to offer us a lot of clarification. But Zach, do you have that? I'm, I'm trying to pull it up, but if you've got it handy, do you have your, uh, survey?
Uh, yeah. I, I'll, I'll send that to you too here in a minute. Okay. It's on its way to you.
Thanks. I appreciate it. I'm not in the cloud right now where I can pull documents easily.
Survey I sent to you was the original survey with the existing house that we demolished.
So Carrie, this plat is, is this sufficient for a plat to build a, a house if it's a subdivision plat? It, I guess this is more normal what plants are, right? We're just strange in that we have some houses that have their own that haven't been plotted. So they're their own subdivision.
Right. Yes. This subdivision plat in conjunction with a survey is sufficient to get a building permit.
So I also sent you a the latest survey that we had for the existing house. It, it basically shows the same thing that the site plan does. There's a, that there's I don't, it's probably about 14 feet from the property line to the street. Are y'all sending that to us, I assume?
Yes, I just sent the first survey and I'm just sending the second one now. So this is interesting.
Haven't gotten mine yet.
So this, this is the scale as well. And I'm, you know, I'm measuring it again, right about 14 feet from the property line to the curb.
So if if council disagrees generally with the non-contiguous curb cut determination, um, which you know, I, I completely understand. I would like the driveway code. You know, I, I completely understand. I would like the driveway code to be more clear. And I think that that's something that's would be worth looking at separately. I will be to go back and re-review this. Without that determination and we'll have ATS review this. Proposed structure with the, against the surveys. And make sure that it conforms to that building code. And then we're still waiting on. Some drainage clarifications, but you know. Barring any issues approving it for drainage. If it conforms to the building code. Then, and drainage code, it can be allowed.
Yeah, be clear, Carrie. I don't, I mean personally speaking, I don't think you did anything wrong, certainly. And when, when in doubt, vote no, but. So don't, don't take offense to. Where we are on it.
I agree with that too. I, I think this is just a complicated thing because we're all sitting here looking at it and it is. It's just a little different. So does that mean that the property line? On. Edge Grove. The house, this, the house is set back 30 feet in the front and then 20 feet on that side. And then. 10 feet in the rear. And 10 feet. To their, to the other neighbor. So you would have. Home feet from your property line. To the house, but it's only showing 16 feet on. Or is it because of the planters, it's only showing 16 feet?
Right. That's just the plot. Not the house.
But the no man's land, we just don't know how much property that is, I guess.
Well, an architect hasn't labeled it, but I can tell you it's for, you know, it's. Right about 14 feet from the property line to the curb. I don't expect y'all to approve or deny anything on, on that, but I mean, that's, we can look at it and, and assume that that's what it is.
Yeah.
So for all intents and purposes, the city has 24 feet of right of way right there?
Yeah, that's my question. That's what it looks like.
Yes.
Well, no, no, it would just be the 14 feet.
It'd be the 10.
Isn't the right of way from the curb?
Cause when you platted, when you have your property, then it's the first 10 feet of your property line is city right of way, right?
Right. That's the right of way, but it looks like, I mean, if he doesn't own it. I, I assume we do.
No, I'm, I'm talking about that we have the 14 feet of no man's land, but then his property line in 10 feet. Of his property line into his home is city right of way. On everybody's property. The first 10 feet from property line. Is that correct?
So it's the, the combination of the two. I see what you're saying, Wendy, because right now I'm looking at the survey and. The, am I correct that the dark black line? That curves around the bottom of the property and goes on the right side of the property is where the property line is based on the survey? So then there's that, there's a section of property from that black line to the street. That's not included in the property. And then there should be an additional 10 feet end from that black line the other way. That's the city's.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That's what Wendy is saying, but is it correct that the property, the property line on the survey is where the dark black line is?
That's what he's saying, because that's where the, you look, that's where the meets and bounds is showing in that corner.
I just, I mean, I, I'm just making sure I understand. So I, I guess I would have two comments is it seems like maybe. That wasn't reflected in the, it, it's a little confusing in, in what was submitted. And so. That's a question in my mind now, but Carrie, I would say that if we're looking for an example of, I think what the code maybe. Was written to address in my mind, it's on the survey, there's two. Non-contiguous driveway cuts on the same side of the street. Right? So you, i- if you're going to have them on the same side of the street, it seems like they, they would, they should have connected. And I think that maybe the code was drafted to address things like that. But I, I echo Gavin that I think this is a confusing issue. And I know that when you and I talked to you, I was like, yeah, we need to clarify our driveway code. So. I think we need to clarify it for Carrie. I think we need to clarify it for the rest of us. And. This is a great example on the survey of probably not a great driveway configuration that we want to see in the future on the original. In my mind.
There are other houses in the city like. Uh, on Gentry. Gabby's house, like they have a garage and then they have a, a separate garage. So they have two curbway driveway cuts. And there's another one. On Vale at the Bray's house where they have a two car garage and then they have a backyard garage and there's two curb cuts, but it's on the same street. So. You know, I think there are.
Those are great examples too. There, there's a, there's a good distance between them though, too.
Yeah, this one especially because it turned into the, one of our busiest streets. It, it's just a different animal, but I, I do think that that 24 feet of. Potential right of way for drainage features is really interesting, given all that we're talking about with our easements and right of way and. Mapping things, so.
Are you sure the right, are you sure the right of 10 feet from the street? You're telling me it's 10 feet from the property line?
I'm going to look up the code real quick just to verify what I.
I, I always thought it was feet from the street, but I might've been assuming.
So does the property owner, if, if the survey is correct, does the property owner need an easement from the city to put in the driveway? And the sidewalk that's there, the, the stepstones?
We have typically allowed people to have walkways that go from. Well, that extend all the way to the street. Because it, it wouldn't make sense to have it stop. Right? It, it wouldn't make sense to have your walkway go all the way to 10 feet from the edge of the street. So. Flatwork like that is usually allowed all the way to the street.
Interesting. I can't wait to see the GIS. It'll be interesting to see all, all the other slivers of property the city has to work with.
Well, your driveway goes all the way to the street. I mean, you have to be able to get from the street into your garage. So.
Except that if my property line extends all the way to the street, then my driveway is going through. My property to reach the street. In this case, the survey is showing us that the property line is actually, it looks like maybe. 10 to 12 feet off of the street.
Right.
I think most property, crawling wood, that the property lines are not at the curb. That there's a buffer somewhere five to 10 feet. And it, we don't have a definition of right of way. I've been looking for it for like 30 minutes. So I guess it depends on how you, how you.
106, 7.76 buck. Look at that one.
Yeah, you'd find it.
Did you say it again?
107.76. It says minimum required depth and width of yards. It says in order to determine compliance with the minimum yard depth. And the width requirements of the section measurement shall be made from the closest. On the foundation line of a qualified building as the term is defined in this, defined in this section to either the lot line. Or street right of way line, whichever results in the shortest distance. So it's the lot.
So. Let's.
That's not the right of way though. Let me find that.
Well, and let's make sure, I mean, I, I can assist city staff and, and looking at all this stuff, but. Let's remember the difference between, you know, right of ways and easement. So typically a right of way is a dedication. Because the city wants to potentially utilize that extra land for purposes of expanding the street. That's typically what your right of ways are for. There's oftentimes easement in the front of people's property for purposes of. Laying sidewalk or things of that nature. But that stuff is usually either A dedicated on the plat. Or in some of those older plats, they're not, but in newer plats, they typically are. Or it's defined in your code with respect to how much of the property, how much of the land is supposed to be dedicated for right of way. And it's, it's always going to be a dedication. A right of way is almost always, it's rarely an easement. Sometimes it is a street, but it's more often than not. It is a, it is, it is not an easement. It is, in other words, it's a be simple. Instead, instead of just a, instead of an easement. So these are all things that we kind of need to look at. And it further complicates an already complicated issue.
So do we need to, do we need a motion to postpone this or will it continue to go if we take no action?
It depends on, it depends on how you want to handle it. You can make a most, you can give direction to staff to, you know. Determine the appropriate. Code compliance for this particular driveway, understanding now that this curved cut would be allowed if it otherwise complies with the ordinances. And then you could postpone, if that's the case, you could then postpone to the next regular council meeting if necessary, because. Staff goes, comes back and does the analysis and makes a determination that it's, it's otherwise in compliance with the code. Then it would never have, would never have to come back. And quite honestly, as I think about it now. This is a different issue that was originally brought to you.
Yes.
For denial. And so really, really what you should do is give direction to the staff to sort out these issues that you're talking about now. Let staff sort those issues out. If they, if they determine it's all in compliance, then no problem. They, the property owner gets to move forward. If they, if it's denied again, it has to go through, back through the plan zoning commission because it's a new issue.
Um, to your point, Charlie, I think section 105 dash two seven, when, when we have a building permit. You have to have a, a plat for the purposes of build, of a building permit. It's very prescriptive and where you have to have your easements and dedicated right of way. Or dedicated easements for the right of way. And so if we are allowing properties to be built with the 1958 plat subdivision plat that doesn't have these dedications, then. Do they have the dedications and like, is there a remedy to that? If, if there's not?
Certainly things I would be happy to take a look and then come back to you with answers.
Great. Thank you.
But just to be clear, we don't have a definition of right of way in our code, correct?
If you look under the plat, it talks about the right of way and the easements that have to be dedicated for the property to get a building permit.
I know, but there's no.
105 dash two seven. That's the closest I could find.
Yeah. So there's no formal definition of right of way. It, the term needs to be defined exactly what it is, what's meant by it. And how.
Yeah, you just did a quick search, parentheticals, parenthetical, right of way, and then defined in your code. And only four things popped up, none of which is a definition of right of way.
So Mayor, are you open for a motion? I think you're on mute.
I am on mute, but I, that I, and, and I'm still ready for a motion.
I'm going to try to remember what Charlie just said because I thought it was a good motion. I would move to direct.
Provide direction, yeah, provide direction to city staff to determine whether or not the proposed driveway, otherwise in conformance with the city's code.
That's, that's my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have second counsel?
Second.
Motion is second for the discussion. Hearing any call vote. Sarah Hudson?
Aye.
Let me Patillo?
Aye.
Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Buck Shapiro?
Aye.
Gavin Massengill?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries.
So is the homeowner clear on what we did there?
Yeah, I got it. You want, you want staff to make a, another determination? That's fine. Sorry to complicate things. I was just looking for someplace to stick on.
No problem.
You're okay. We'll get, we'll get through it. We appreciate your patience working, working with us.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, we'll move on to. I made discussion possible action on the fencing landscaping and off-street parking plans as part of a site plan application by Western Hills. Athletic Club. Carrie, are you still with us?
Oh yeah, I'm here.
Great. Do you want to walk us through? All the documents that we're looking at here? Expand it a little bit from last month's conversations. Is that fair?
Yes. And actually you received this evening Jay's review. He was waiting for some comment responses at the last meeting. And he got those comment responses and just sent the approval, the drainage approval. This evening. So that has been forwarded to you. And we looked, Amber and Charlie and I looked back at the code and why. This is going to you all. And we determined that the reason. We're looking at it is because of the specific requirements that council approve landscaping and fencing plans within park zoning.
There's also require for a drainage plan and a building permit. Right?
The drainage plan and the building permit. Appear to be at the discretion of the building official.
Can later.
Hey Gavin. There we go. Okay.
Tell them. Don't get that. Sorry.
No worries, no worries. Go ahead, Sarah.
Well, I was going to say in 103.203. It says if a development activity that requires a drainage analysis pursuant to 103, 202 would cause an increase of stormwater runoff at any point along the perimeter of the property boundary. A drainage plan is required and a building permit for the proposed development must be obtained prior to commencement of the development activity. That doesn't sound to me like it's. Optional.
It, it does have to be obtained. The question is whether or not it's in your purview to approve it. Or whether it's in mine.
But if there is a building permit required, aren't they required to provide notice to surrounding property owners?
They are required to provide notice.
And has that been done?
It has not because I live two doors down and I have not received notice nor have any of my neighbors.
And, and we got the, the approved drainage plan in the middle of this meeting.
I personally am for postponing this and I, I think Western Hills Athletic Club needs to meet with all the surrounding neighbors to kind of discuss what the project is. I know there's some drainage concerns on the northwest side, back to Pleasant Cove. And there's already some issues over there. So I don't know if this is going to compound it or could potentially fix it depending on their facilities, but I, I just think there needs to be some sort of communication with the surrounding neighbors and probably a meeting, just discussing all this. So the neighbors can voice their concerns. They can answer questions, just kind of normal procedure.
I agree. And I wanted to pull this item from the agenda, but had specific requests to put it back on here. So I, I'm, my two senses, I'm fully in support of postponing this until we have some community feedback from the surrounding neighbors and this further.
Um, can I ask a procedural question? Um, so could we initiate a public hearing so that we would make sure that we have additional notice for neighbors to provide their feedback on the fencing structure once one is actually proposed? Because it doesn't look like to me that the current plan has a fence. And that is something that we would have to approve. To, like, can we, can we choose for that to be noticed as a, as a public hearing?
Charlie, can you weigh in? I think that we did agree that this, we could notice this as a public hearing.
Yeah, you can, you can always notice anything as a public hearing.
Okay. So I, I do think that because of, I think there, there's only a few things that we actually can make a decision on, but having looked at the, the plan and then the things that we can make decisions on, the fence is an important issue because it's going to provide a barrier on that side and with, with several properties and could potentially be something that could also be used to do some noise dampening, but could also potentially cause drainage issues. And so I think that's something where I do want to make sure that we have, have provided adequate notice that it's being considered. And it seems like the public hearing is something that helps us provide that notice. So I would, I would be in favor of whenever we get to that point of, of having something like that.
Can we also offer that you'll be determining the landscaping as well? And because this is essentially all flat work and a, a lot of landscaping, yes, there are drainage plans, but they're for flat work and relate to landscaping. Depending on your council's determination for landscaping, you're essentially approving or denying these plans. So that might be something that also deserves a, you know, perhaps a public hearing.
Okay. And I, I think the other comment I would make is that in general, I find the pool to really choose things that reflect community values and do a great job at that. And so I look forward to the results of the pool board meeting with neighbors and getting some more feedback so that this really can be a solution that reflects our community values moving forward and takes into account some of the concerns that we're receiving via email. And I have no doubt that they can do that.
Can we also make sure that there are a couple of things in our code that are being applied to this because Park Zone is required to have no more than 50% impervious cover on the lot. And there is not that I could find anywhere in the plans, an impervious cover calculation for the overall site. And, and I'm not sure that what they have calculated includes the surface area of the pool as impervious cover. And that needs to be included as well. And then we also have in 107.424, there's a buffer requirement between a budding park and residential lots. It says a 30-foot green belt zone measured horizontally shall be provided between the line of the residential zone and the impervious cover, which would indicate to me that they have to have a 30-foot buffer between the property line and the start of the impervious cover, which I'm pretty sure the current tennis courts don't meet. And, and the proposed courts, I don't think meet either.
Guys, we have Brian Nash with his hand raised. Brian, you want to unmute and?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, this is Brian Nash. I, I thought I'd chime in to allay some of these concerns, particularly since Sarah's noting a number of codes and people seem to be concerned that there wasn't notice. There, this is not, I don't know really, honestly, the whole, the pool board met this week and we were all kind of surprised that this was even an agenda item because we've never even approved as a board of a plan. And we have not decided to move forward with anything. So the reason that you're not seeing the things that you mentioned, Sarah, or that Buck, no neighbors have been notified is because frankly, we have not applied for, or are seeking approval on a plan to move forward. We don't even necessarily know what we want to do yet. We were simply trying to better understand the rules and regulations that would have governed so that we could use that as part of the calculus in determining what we wanted to do. So I believe there was, there might be an engineer that we employed on this issue that's on the call as well. But this was honestly just a, okay, well, let's see if we understand the regulations. I believe that the engineer or our planner had reached out to Carrie. There was some discussion about which ordinance is applied. And somehow this has spun into an application, but it's not. And so we haven't really applied for anything. So certainly really appreciate the great feedback we're hearing from everyone and neighbors. We plan to take that into account. I don't know what it means to notice a public hearing to go over our landscape plan, but we don't have one that we formally approved and plan to pursue at this point in time. So all of this sounds very premature to us, meaning the Western Hills Athletic Club Board.
But you already sent the plans to the TCQ for approval.
No. Well, I don't know, to be honest. Well, Sarah, I'll confess to you, this isn't my baby. It's not my project. I just thought it would add a little bit of clarity to the scenario here. And so I, I just think we're trying to understand what the rules require so that we can make a decision. Does that make sense? No?
Yes. Thank you, Brian.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
It does. Thank you. So why is this on the agenda then?
I have no idea.
And?
I don't want to complicate matters, but I do have application documents, drainage plans, landscaping plans, and have, have invoice for preliminary fees. So I don't, I don't know what the intention of the board is because I've not been in communication with the board. I've been in communication with the person contracted to design the plans, but.
Yeah, Carrie, this is Brian and thank, thanks for some clarity there. I, I honestly, I think maybe there was some miscommunication with Josh or David or whoever might have reached out to you about sort of the stage of proceedings. And so I, I mean, to be honest, the first I've ever even seen the plans was during the first two hours of this call, I was scrolling through the agenda to kind of familiarize myself with the issue and was surprised to have seen all these things with the site plan and all that because I, I haven't even seen it. And as a board member, I would have hoped to have seen that stuff, to approve it before we would have even submitted an application. So what, what I think makes sense, Carrie, is if we can all go offline at some point and I'll kind of understand what was being communicated to you. But, you know, and it's certainly not Carrie's fault. In fact, if I may, take the time, the city has been doing an awesome job. You guys are really great. Appreciate all the hard work. I think there might have just been some miscommunication about what we were trying to understand. We, meaning maybe Josh or David had reached out about getting some certainty about what we could or could not do.
So if you look back at the agenda packet for the November meeting, we had a commercial site development application in the packet that was signed by Sang McDonald. So it sounds like maybe there's some communications on the board that needs to happen. Because-
It's on this month as well.
Yeah. I mean, this is pretty clearly an application that was submitted to the city.
But in fairness with my, I've had a few conversations with board members. I, I don't think there's a lot of clarity of understanding what our process is. So, I mean, I, I don't think anyone is being dishonest with where they feel like it is. I think there's just some confusion as to what we consider our process and what they consider, what they're trying to understand to be our process.
Um, I, I, it does sound like we are not going to make any decisions tonight. And I would like to point out that if, if we're wanting section 107 dash two four two to read the way that Sarah just interpreted it, we may need to amend it because I, I read through that section pretty clearly earlier. And if you're strictly interpreting it based on the uses of the terms residential zone versus a budding lot, it's clear to me that as long as there is a 30-foot green belt zone measured horizontally between the line of the residential zone and the impervious cover, it doesn't have to be with the actual budding lot. And the residential zone would start basically at the street. And right now there is a 30-foot green belt along the front of the club over on that side on Wallace. And it does look like the plans would include that. I think, especially if you go then into paragraph two, it then gets into discussions of, in areas where terrain and other features do not provide a visual screen between a lot in a park district and a budding lot. So it goes back to using that a budding lot term again in paragraph two, but it does not use it in paragraph one. And so I, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to take issue so much as I, I did spend time reading this section earlier and trying to kind of put on both hats. Not just wanting to deny it, but also wanting to see like, what does this say if I came to it? And I do believe that current 30-foot and the proposed 30-foot would both comply with 107 dash two four two one.
Well, if you look at the first part of that, though, it says each lot in a park district which abuts a lot in a residential district shall be developed in compliance with the following requirements.
Right. But then when you go to paragraph one, it clearly states a 30-foot green belt zone measured horizontally shall be provided between the line of the residential zone and the impervious, pervious cover. It does not say the line of the budding lot. And in paragraph two, it refers to the budding lot. So I just think there's, all I'm saying is there's an argument there because there are ambiguities in our code all over the place. And I, I do think that there is an ambiguity there.
Okay. Well, the 50% impervious cover is pretty straightforward.
So I'm not taking issue with that. I'm, I'm just saying that I did, I did spend some time reading 107 dash two four two. And if what the board is looking for is some discussion about how council members feel about different code sections that could or could not apply, I'm providing that I have a different interpretation of 107 dash two four two.
Okay.
I do think that section three of that sec, of that code section does require that there be, and, and the other, where was it about the fences? I think the fences are important and we also need to make sure that we know what the lighting plan is. If there's going to be lighting on the courts.
Let's postpone it and give them some time to visit with their neighbors and hope, hope everyone can get along.
Everybody comfortable with postponing? Sounds like there's a lot of additional. Anybody need clarity on it? Brian, you still have your hand raised. Are you good?
It's only because I lack the technical capabilities to figure out how to put my hand down.
Fair enough. I just did not want to get accused later of silencing anyone. Appreciate everyone's time on item eight. Assuming we're good with postponement. Moving on to item nine, discussion in possible action on amendments to section two dash one five one, ethics of the city's code of ordinances. Charlie, as we pointed out earlier, you don't technically enjoy speaking during these meetings. But this is going to be a little bit on you to help us walk through this. Just to recap, counsel, this goes back a number of months. We've had full agendas for quite some time. I believe originally it was brought to the forefront by Amy for discussion. And we've had, I think, some recaps in the meantime, but what you're looking at right now is a red line from Charlie that brings our ethics code more closely in compliance to current state law. And to dig into it, Charlie, you've recapped me very, very well. I would ask that you provide the same to the council.
Yes, sir. So there's some notes in here, but I essentially went through it and, and tried not to make any policy decisions as I'm going through it. But to make it sort of consistent with state law issues. And the first step that I did that is in section two dash one fifty-four, which provide, used to provide that no city official or employee may transact any business in his official capacity with or participate in any discussion of, session affecting any person with whom he has a personal business relationship or business entity in which he has any personal community interest, whether direct or indirect, provided however that participation involving a nonprofit organization, entity or other terrible association will not constitute a conflict of interest on this provision. There were so many undefined phrases and words in there. It just seemed to me that ensuring that all officials of the city are in compliance with the Texas Local Government Code, which is the state law with respect to conflicts of interest would make things a lot simpler. That section is essentially was a conflict of interest provision. And so I struck that and just said all officials of the city are required to comply with the requirements of the Texas Local Government Code, chapter 171, and any amendments or successors there too. Section C of that section just struck out himself or mostly because just trying to make it gender neutral. Section D said that an official employee may not participate in discussions of voter decisions other than which he has personal community interest, whether direct or indirect, and when his participation is prohibited by law. Certainly they can't participate in the matter where it's prohibited by law already. And then the, that section with to direct or indirect- the, that section with to direct or indirect um was problematic in my mind because it's not defined. And so I changed that because this deals with employees. Um, and official would have to comply with this local government code, which already dictates how an official must handle a conflict of interest as it's defined by the code, that an employee who would very rarely be involved in a conflict of interest issue, quite honestly, especially in the city of Rollingwood, because those conflicts of interest usually arise as a result of living within the community. And I don't think any of our employees live within the city of Rollingwood. An employee must notify his supervisor in writing of any personal pecuniary interest that he has at a matter that would be affected by an exercise discretionary authority by the employee. Upon receipt of such notice, his supervisor will reassign the matter. And so this, the onerous on the employee to provide written notice to their, their direct supervisor that they have a personal pecuniary money interest in the issue. And if that happens, then the employee must note, then the employee must be reassigned so that they're not involved in the issue. I struck out all of two dash one five five, which discussed how you deal with disclosures of conflict of interest because again, chapter one seventy one of the local government dictates how the officials are supposed to disclose conflicts of interest. They actually have to file a disclosure statement with the city stating what the conflict of interest is. And um, and that I think that information has to be posted on the website, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. The state law does dictate how officials are to deal with those conflicts um under state law, one seventy one. And then, of course, um, we've dealt with it above with D with employees and how they're required to disclose those conflicts of interest directly to their supervisors. If we scroll down to sections two dash one sixty C, I made a slight revision there, so it's consistent with state law. Counsel may consider a complaint in executive session subject to the individual's right under the Texas Open Meetings Act to a public hearing. And then I struck out, um, but any final action, decision, or vote. Hard to, because I'm a word person and I, I try to draft like Hemingway, the less words, the better. Um, just struck out with regards to and use the word about. Um, I struck, if you look at section two dash sixty one, I struck out that last sentence. Any city council member removed from office because of violations of this article will be ineligible to hold the city office or employment for two years after removal in addition to any other penalty provided by law. Honestly, I have no idea what that's doing in there. A general law city does not have the authority to remove an individual council member from office. And neither would the state have the ability to remove a council member from off, from office for violating a, a local ordinance. I included um under subsection B of that same section um and state law to make clear that um any disciplinary actions have to be consistent with state law. And then I struck out section two dash one sixty two, city attorney opinions. It said, any council member requests that the city attorney issue an opinion with regards to whether a specific interest or relationship constitutes a conflict of interest under this division. Any council member or city official acting in a reasonable reliance on such city attorney opinion will not be considered to violate this division due to the, such interest or relationship. Two points with respect to that particular provision, I would recommend striking it. The first is that remember that the city attorney does not represent individual council members in individual capacity. And to the extent they are coming to me with potential conflicts of interest for which they could be liable, um, I don't have an attorney-client relationship with that particular council member. And anything that they say to me, um, if there happens to be a trial on the issue, they could not bring up the attorney-client relationship as a, um, as a prohibition to me testifying against them. Second, I really don't think the city attorney should put in the position of making these decisions so that the council member can then use that as an excuse for not being liable for whatever um activity that, that they're engaging in. Or the city council, the city attorney being a position, being in the crossfire of saying that they're not responsible when it may be subject to interpretation. Those were um, those were my um specific changes. Um, I have comments in here with respect to some policy issues um that I just didn't want to get involved in making revisions to, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions about it, give you opinions about it so that you can make those policy decisions. Any questions?
None for me. Um, counsel. Charlie, I think you've done a great job uh addressing these. Thank you very, very much. Um, Amy, I saw you just unmuted. Were you just waiting for the, the right time for a comment? Is now the right time?
So excited to comment. No. Um, thank you, Charlie. This is really great. Uh, you saw, you definitely addressed some of the issues that I have wondered about for several years. And, and then also address them in a way that I think will keep them simplified in the future so that we aren't having to update our code in the event that the state updates their code um or the code sections that are cited. So I really appreciate that in the detail and the way that you laid it out with um addressing code issues versus policy issues as well. I think that's great. Uh, I think that I had a couple of questions. So there was comment CZ three um under section two dash one five four C. And I did wonder if instead of, like, if you, if you uh if you were trying to keep the initial intent of the section, whether it should say oneself or any other person, because it seemed like it was directed at not being able to represent yourself or another person.
Yeah. And, and after, actually, after taking a look at that um, um, just now, um, I, more to it than just the gender issue. Um, I don't think that under the, I didn't put a lot of energy and effort into a detailed dive into the case law on this.
Mm-hmm.
My general recollection is that you can't prohibit an individual from representing themselves in front of a body. You could prohibit them from representing others, but not themselves.
Yeah, and I, I've kind of just, I was, I guess I've tried to figure out um how this applies, like when we have a council member who needs to apply for a building permit and they need to go off the dais and then represent themselves during the meeting. Uh, and there's, there's some spaces in there that just seem conflicting. Um, I wonder
The, the, and there's going to be certain circumstances um where they would have to leave the dais anyway because
Right.
because they would have a conflict of interest under chapter one seventy one.
That's what I was wondering. So I was trying to think of the example of when this would apply. That wouldn't be one seventy one.
Yeah, sure. I mean, certainly that, I mean, let's say they're one, present their case to the planning and zoning commission, right? This would prohibit them from doing that, but they could certainly do it. And it has nothing to do with the city council meeting or the zoning board of adjustment.
I see. So do you recommend keeping something like section C in there for those issues, but just addressing the accepted matters of purely public concern?
I, I really don't want to answer that question. Let me just tell you the reason why. And the reason why is I'm, these are really purely policy considerations by the governing body with respect to how they want to handle ethics and ethics regulations. Um, I, I can tell you, I had a, I had a city council meeting last night with another city and they completely peeled their entire ethics ordinance, completely repealed it. And the reason why is because it had become a political weapon by other people who file ethical charges against other council members based on the ethics ordinance. And it was becoming caustic. And they repealed it. They just said, we're not going to deal with it anymore. Mike, if you want to know my personal opinion, um, I don't think ethics ordinances for cities um are very effective. They almost always result in becoming political weapons against other council members by other council members or citizens who don't like them for whatever reason. Uh, and state law um provides very clearly what you can and cannot do with respect to conflicts of interest, as an example. We have included, you'll notice that I, I make a statement in here. Um, and again, this is my personal opinion. Y'all can do whatever you want. But we've included a section of gifts and a section of bribery in our ethics code. And those are direct statements with respect to you can't violate what is already a violation of state law. How in the world would you make, I mean, I don't even think you can make that determination. Only a court can make determination, a criminal court can make a determination as to whether or not someone has committed the act of bribery or accepted a gift and violated the statute. And since it's already covered by state law and all you do is repeat state law, I don't understand. I don't personally understand why it's in there. I'm sure there was a political reason for it at the time, but that's my personal opinion that I think ethics ordinances and local ordinances um can be problematic, but it's just my personal opinion of y'all's policy decision. Um, and it's, that's a long-winded answer as to why do I think that or shouldn't, shouldn't be in there? Not relevant to y'all's decision-making.
I appreciate that. I, I always appreciate when you give that boundary. Uh, because I think we're still learning where your boundaries are versus our old city attorneys, and I really appreciate that. Um, another question I had was under two dash one six one, under letter A, you had a comment that this needs to be completely rewritten with direction from the city council. Only a district judge may remove a council member. So I agreed with that. What I wondered is um I, I don't even know what a reprimand is. So I, I wondered if we move, removed, if we removed removal, then it seemed like that would address the removal issue, but I don't know what a reprimand is. I have, I have, I do know another council member up in the Dallas area who was reprimanded by his council. And it was a very political thing. And I think in the past, I've heard people talk about wanting to, considering voting to censure a council member in Rollingwood. And I, I actually don't even know what that would mean. Um, so I just wondered if we rewrite that section, are there, are there examples of code that you have in other cities where um you would address violations in a different way than the way we've addressed it?
No, where cities have these um ethical and their, their codes of conduct more than they are ethical provisions. It's how we conduct ourselves on the dais. I have several um councilmen, councils that have those types of provisions. They don't have an ethics code, but they've got a, you know, code of conduct. And they use terms like censure or reprimand, which essentially means um we're saying, we don't like what you did. Don't do it again, but it's in the form of a formal resolution. And that's typically how I've assisted other cities in dealing with that. Um, there is very little you can do as a general law city um to um deal with your individual council members. There's quite a bit, obviously, you could do with respect to dealing with your employees. Um, they can be terminated for violations of personnel policies and codes of conduct and things of that nature. But council members are elected officials. In a general law city, there's no authority to remove a council member uh unless it, as a general matter, it's for misconduct. And there's some other things. For example, one of the weird ones is that uh, I don't know, know this, but if you're ever drunk in public, you can be removed from office. Um, so you know, there's just not a lot of flexibility um for general, for general law cities to, you know, to, to to, you know, deal with this conduct other than through a political fashion on the dais. Um, and then publicly saying, I disagree with whatever occurred.
And we don't really need code that says that we can do that. We can just do that. We can have a motion. We can have a gender item and discuss it and
Yeah, my preference would be that you have a code provision that says it so that if you do it, um, the person who you're doing it to can't argue that you don't have the authority. Because you're a general law city and so they're gonna
So that's where we would have a code of conduct instead.
Code of conduct, yes.
So potentially we could replace two dash one six one A with more of a code of conduct. If we were to replace it with anything at all.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you were to replace um um, yeah, I guess that's correct. That would be appropriate, I suppose.
Those are my questions.
I've overstayed my welcome in the office, guys. The light keeps turning off. Um, that's my gentle way of saying if we could expedite this meeting three hours into it, I'm sure everyone would be most appreciative. Um, with that, uh, you have an opportunity to take some action on what's been uh presented. Is uh, anyone so inclined? Going once, going twice.
I guess I would, my motion would be to direct the city attorney to can, Charlie, would you, would you feel comfortable providing us with an example code of conduct?
Sure, I've got a couple, I have a couple of clients who have them. I could, I could, I could hunt them down, provide them to you.
Okay, I would just, I would move to direct the city attorney to provide us with a example of a code of conduct for potentially replacing sections related to violations.
You have a motion? Second?
Second.
Second from Gavin. Uh, discussion, counsel. All right, Sarah Hudson?
Aye.
Amy Patillo?
Aye.
Gavin Massagill?
Aye.
Wendy Huntley? I could see you saying aye, but you're muted.
Aye.
There we go. Buck Shapiro?
Aye.
On. Thank you, Charlie. Uh, don't go too far. You're up again on item ten, discussion, possible action on a review of section two fifty seven, presiding officer mayor pro tem uh council liaisons uh the city's code of ordinances. Uh, memory serves, this uh was something we asked Charlie to review uh because we were concerned about uh potential uh quorum uh with multiple council members uh being very interested in joining uh some of the live meetings that we've had in the past from boards and commissions. Charlie, would you mind bringing us around on your changes uh or recommendations? Comments on two fifty seven, please.
I don't mean to I was actually directed, you know, I was, you know, directed to make these specific changes so I can, I can mean
That'd work.
But so I'm, I can tell you, you know, what it's now at the very bottom. Um, it, it now says that, and it's underlined, each council liaison shall serve at council's pleasure as the council's representative for negotiations and formulation of council-approved policies in connection with their assigned issuer subject. No council member may bind or obligate the city away in reference to the assigned subject matter without prior authorization from the city council. So essentially this is clear that um, that any council representative that is dealing with negotiations and formulation on, on any um boards, on any board um must be consistent with the council-approved policies. They can't be an individual policy. Does that make sense?
It does. So to put it in a layperson's terms for my own sake, uh, what you're suggesting is that the liaison position is largely there to liaise, represent the council's wishes.
Correct. Yeah, that's correct. That's what usually, well, ninety nine point nine percent of the time, that's what a liaison is to be doing.
Good deal. All right. Just making sure uh we're cutting through.
So what, what happens when we don't have a policy to start with?
So what, what happens when we don't have a policy to start with?
Fair question.
Can't hear you, Charlie.
Sorry. Wouldn't advocate for anything. You'd just be the liaison, you'd bring it back, you'd bring back whatever the other, what other, the boards, you know, decision making.
Disappeared again.
Wait a minute. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so if, if the council hasn't formulated a policy on a particular issue, then they, the individual council member would not advocate for a particular policy. They would just simply take the information provided by the board member to bring it back to council. So council could then formulate their policy based on an understanding of what was occurring with that border commission through the liaison.
You know, once upon a time, the liaison didn't show up at any of the board and commission meetings. And the chairman of the commission is the one that came to the council to present their position. And, and to me, if we are going to take out the, the position of the council members helping to establish policy other than at the council meetings, then we ought to not require the council members to go to the meetings unless let the utility commission or the park commission or the, you know, P and Z or whoever do their thing and then have them come back to the, the council meeting and, and make their presentation there.
Well, I, I think that's a policy choice we could make.
Sure. I mean, but, but to me, it's like, we already spend enough time doing our work, so we don't really need to be the gophers back and forth between the commission and the council if we're not having any other input other than being the, the messenger.
It's, it's an interesting take. I figured there was probably a mutual benefit to both sides such that you weren't requiring every council member to then take in every minute of every meeting. You had a liaison position that could readily summarize for the council, ensure they, the chairperson could do the same. How do you, how do you think the chairperson or the boards or commissions? How do you imagine that they're going to get some level of immediacy on, when they question city policy or city council policy?
What do you mean?
During their meetings, for instance, if the chairperson for P and Z was curious as to the general context of council on any given position or policy. Is it incumbent on all of the board members and commission members? Or at least the, the chairpersons or some designated individual to recap the city council meetings in all those regards?
That's the city administrator, is it the meeting?
Okay. That's, that was an honest question and it was a good answer.
That's the way, that's the way it used to be done. I don't know why, I don't know why it was changed. And I can't tell you when it was changed, but.
To, to bring liaisons into the position?
To, to bring, to have liaisons be attending the, the board or commission meeting and, and be the, the gopher back and forth between, you know, summarizing the information instead of having the, the board chairman come to the council meeting and present their information.
I can't, I can't answer that. You have a much longer storied history on council than I, than I have. So if, you know, you don't know when that change happened, neither would I. Amy, you've got a history on, long history on tenure on council. Are you aware of the history there? Give us some context.
My experience has been that it really has been dependent upon the chair. And so when I first came on the council and then was parks liaison, Tony Hudson was the chair. And she frequently would come and present to the council. And then when she didn't, I would, I would present whatever motions the parks commission had made. But we, the other thing that we, that we started doing, I don't know, it was a few years into being on the council. We started actually sending the motions that the parks commission had made to the council to put on the council packet to approve. And for a while, it would just be, I remember when I first started, we just had kind of a parks commission item. And then any emotions that they had made, I would then motion to approve those motions. And so there was less notice. So we, we worked on providing better notice with that. And then I, I don't know, you know, I, I don't remember all of the other chairs coming and doing that like Tony would. But we also had specific times in each meeting for each board and commission to come and present if they wanted to. And we don't really have that in our meetings anymore either. So I think things have changed. I think it depends on the mayor, really. So, you know, the mayors set how they want to have the meetings and what types of comments there are. Like when Tom was mayor, we had really, we had really robust engineer reports. And that was something that I think he really emphasized. And I, I could probably point to every mayor and look at things that they emphasized and I really appreciate it. So, but it's just, I think it's just dependent. I mean, I, I have wondered for a while why we have the liaison role because there's not a clear, to me, the, the definition of liaison is so, has been so ambiguous that it's not clear to me fully why we have it. And so I, I just wanted Charlie to have reviewed it and made sure that we considered ways to kind of shore up the definition a little bit more. But I don't, I, and not to go off topic, but I don't know if it answers the question of what do we do about if three council members want to come to a meeting, like, or like a parks commission meeting or a P and Z meeting.
You, you post it as a meeting.
So the question, the issue was though, that I showed up to a utility commission meeting. Sarah was there and Wendy was there. And so when I came in, I was told I had to leave. And I had information that I was supposed to present on an agenda item.
Y'all should have negotiated that amongst yourselves who stays and goes.
Well, and Wendy then came out and then I came back, I, I think I, at that point, I had to leave to go back home to do something. I'd missed my window to be there. But it seems odd to me, because we've also had planning and zoning meetings where there was a planning and zoning meeting where I was on the agenda to present about the tree ordinance. And Wendy was also there assisting me in providing that. And then Sarah came as well. And all three of us commented and nothing was said about it. So I, I think it's, it's one of those things where I can, I can point to different examples. And I just think it's important for us to have clarity so that we know how to comply with that.
I can give you that clarity right now. Anytime three council members are in front of a commission and there isn't a properly posted meeting, it's a violation of the Texas Open Meeting Act. There's, there's gray area in that discussion. That's just the law. Unfortunately, I didn't make it. It does create problems when more than one council member wants to be present at a border commission. But once you have three council members present, even if you're not saying anything, the Texas Open Meetings Act makes clear that you have to, that you have to have a properly posted meeting. Now, the risks associated with you being there from a legal standpoint are relatively low other than probably someone bringing an injunction against the city to, to prohibit you from doing it again. Or potentially if the, some action is taken by city council at a future, future city council meeting, someone could argue that a derivative of the, of the three council members being present at the planning and zoning commission meeting where it was originally discussed, the action is void. It's also a risk. But it is clear that it's a violation of the act for a quorum of city council present at a board, at the same time at a border commission of the city.
So if, if we're, just to ask for a hypothetical, like before the pandemic is over, if we have a Zoom meeting and it's P and Z, and we now have two liaisons appointed to represent P and Z, and they're both present, and then I'm asked to come and talk about the tree ordinance. Does one of them have to go off of the meeting?
Yeah.
Can't we just post that?
Yes, that's, that's what I said at the beginning.
Right. What if we don't know, what if we don't know ahead of time? Like what if, what if, what if, what if I see the agenda?
You just always do it.
Yeah, there's, so, so there is, I feel like we're getting a little off topic. I don't mind giving this information. So cities have a practice of posting for every meeting that a possible quorum of the city council will attend a particular planning, zoning meetings, zoning board adjustment, whatever it happens to be. And they always post it on the, on that agenda. It's in bold print. It says, warm city council may be present at this meeting. That's all good and fine, but what happens is, and in my experience is that people forget that just posting the agenda is not sufficient for compliance with the act. To comply with the Texas Open Meetings Act, not only do you have to post the agenda, but you have to have a recording minutes of that particular city council meeting. And so what happens is someone goes to the parks commission meeting that is not recorded. We've got a quorum at the parks commission meeting that's not being recorded. And people, the city council members speak or don't speak or whatever, but they're there. And then the city council never takes, never has moves associated with that particular meeting. The parks commission does, but the city council doesn't. So I'm okay with doing that so long as someone is tracking whether or not actual council members show up in the form of a quorum. And if they do so, then we take whatever meeting minutes from that meeting and the city council approves them as their own minutes for their meeting when they were at that meeting. If any of that made any sense.
Yes. Thank you, Charlie.
I appreciate that. So, I mean, I, I think that the, I think the clarifications you've made, Charlie, basically just clarify that the council member is there as a liaison to reflect the council's policies and not their own policies. I think that clarification is helpful. So if mayor, if you're ready for a motion, I would make a motion. If there's more discussion, I'll wait.
If you're ready for a motion, go for it.
Okay, I would move to approve the amended changes to section two dash five seven.
Motion, Amy, do we have a second, counsel?
Second.
Second from Gavin, any additional discussion, counsel? Okay, not hearing any. Sarah?
No.
Amy?
Aye.
Gavin?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Buck? Hey Buck, you with us?
Hey, sorry, I gotta abstain because my, my, I've only caught about a tenth of that. Something's wrong with my service and I'm not catching everything.
No worries. Okay, so motion carries three to one and one abstention?
We'll have to bring this back in the form of an ordinance, but we'll do that at the next regular meeting.
Great. Thank you, Charlie. Hey, moving on, discussion, possible action regarding a policy for waiving or reducing of fees and or requirements in conjunction with the removal of diseased, dead or immediately dangerous protected trees. This is a pretty timely considering recent notification of another instance of oak wilt that's being investigated in the city. Amber and or Carrie, you guys want to let us know with a little more context, why, why you brought this to us today, why you recommended it be on the agenda?
The council directed us to draft a policy for their consideration at this meeting. And so, and this is what we came up with. I gotta give a shout out to Ashley. She helped with this too. We tried to really think hard about situations in which, you know, maybe if they were paying the fee or, or if they met, I'm sorry, if they went over and above on their tree replacement requirements, that would be a situation where we felt like it could warrant, you know, a reduction or waiving the fees. And so that's kind of where our heads were at there. And we're open to any suggestions, of course.
Amber, can you clarify the underlining and strike throughs? Is that, because we haven't seen a draft of this before, so is that just y'all's internal?
So, yeah, I think Carrie started, she, she shot the first draft over. And then I started editing and then Ashley and I edited together. So what you see is Ashley, my edits to Carrie's initial draft.
Great, that's helpful. I figured there was, was probably a key to it and I just couldn't see it.
We also, part of the policy was if the, we, we looked at the tree abatement in the nuisance section of the code. And so if it was required to be removed, let me see, we could rate, we could waive the tree removal fee if we deemed it a nuisance.
I, I thought it was a good, it, it responds to the, the code changes that we've made and approved tonight. I noticed one typo, I think that got left under the policy section under the re, there's an extra and or, I think, that just needs to get moved up after two.
Yeah, I think what happened, Ashley reorganized, she does a good job of, of thinking how things should be organized as, as far as how, you know, sections and.
I just wanted to, yeah, I, I was going to point that out because I was going to make a motion to approve it, but I didn't want to. I just wanted to point out that typo quickly for it.
Yes.
So I would move to approve the policy for waiving or reducing fees and or requirements in conjunction with the removal of diseased, dead or immediately dangerous protected trees.
Of a motion, do we have a second? Second from Wendy, do we have discussion, counsel? Okay, not hearing any. Sarah? Sorry, Sarah, you muted?
Aye.
Thank you. Amy?
Aye.
Thanks. Gavin?
Aye.
Wendy? As well, Wendy?
Aye.
There you go. Buck, you still with us?
Yeah, aye.
Thank you. Okay, motion carries, counsel. Amber, thank you. Discussion regarding Pegasus's role with the strike force. Amy, you requested this be included with this month's agenda?
Yes. I had some questions from members of the strike force and just thought I would have an agenda item to make sure that there was clear discussion at the council level that could be pointed to you. One of the questions that was posed to me was, there was a statement that Pegasus's contract is supposed to be over soon. And a question of what happens at the end of the year, does their contract continue? Does their contract continue? And then the other question was just more questions about kind of what their role is. And I, I thought it'd be helpful to articulate again, some of the things that we've already stated about their role at the last meeting. So I wondered, I, I let Amber know that one of the questions I'd received was what happens with, with their contract? And as the, as the strike force continues to meet into 2021?
Okay, thank you. Well, are, are we to answer these questions?
I, I think Amber was gonna, Amber, were you going to talk about what happens with their contract in 2021?
I know I sent this to Charlie for confirmation, but there's no end date on their contract. They just need to provide, they need to meet all the different benchmarks in their contract. And if it takes longer than, you know, the six month timeframe, that's okay. And that frequently happens in municipal government projects.
That's section one, correct duration. This agreement shall become effective upon execution by the city and shall remain in effect until satisfactory completion of the scope of work, unless terminated as provided for in this agreement. And so there are various termination opportunities. I believe they largely rest the city. They can be mutually agreed upon. So that's section eight. So there are your outlines there. There is no specific date for termination.
Great. That, I think that's helpful because that's a question that I've been posed, it's been posed to be from several people. And then I think I just continue to have questions about what Pegasus's role is with the strike force. And at least my statement last meeting was that I feel like we, we chose Tom to lead the strike force. And he's been pretty clear with them about what he needs and what he doesn't need. And that's the direction I would also give. But wanted to make sure that we, if anybody else had received that question, that there was an opportunity to make sure that that's clear for the members of the strike force as well.
So, and I don't want to put words in Tom's mouth or anyone else's, but I, I haven't heard, I haven't heard anybody asking for specific clarity in that regard. Tom hasn't necessarily reached out to me either, asking for me or counsel to give specific direction on Pegasus's role. I, I get the impression based on some of these meetings that that they're handling it fairly well. I guess what I'm really asking, is there anything actionable here? And I'm waiting for you guys to take action.
That's, that's literally all I had. It's just discussion and that's all I had.
Got it. Okay, well, counsel, with that on the table, my lights once again have turned off on me. Is, uh, does anybody else have anything to add for discussion sake on this agenda item? See if I can trigger the motion from here so I can pick the agenda item.
I, I will say that I have heard some frustration from some of the strike force members that Pegasus is not providing good answers to their questions. They've, they've asked for information on the modeling that has not been provided to them. I did see an email where somebody had mentioned that they had asked for the underlying data and that Pegasus said they would consider it. So I suppose if somebody asked me for the underlying data, I would just recommend that they go ahead and make a formal request to the city because it is public information. And that's kind of what I told the people who've asked me who want that information. So not to add more public information requests to our staff's plate, but it certainly is something that can be requested. And I think that Pegasus should provide if, if somebody wanted to, to see it. Well, is, is that, does that work if we don't have, the city doesn't have the data? That, that's kind of the problem. I think so, right, Charlie? If Pegasus is our, under a contract with us and somebody requests information through the Public Information Act, then our city secretary would reach out to that contractor and they would provide the information in the requisite time. Is that how, that's how I understand it to work. But if I'm wrong, let me know.
I mean, it can be handled any number of ways. If, if a request is made for information that a third party is holding in, for us, we would reach out to that third party and have them provide us the information normally and then provide it to the requester.
Yeah, in, in this case, they're not holding it for us. They are using it for their work product. And it's not being provided. And the argument being that the contract clearly states that the city would own that information, but it's not being provided to the city.
Well, okay, I, I mean, if there's an issue associated with this, I'd, I'd rather not try to sort through it in the public meeting. I'd rather, you know, deal with it when the request comes in with the administration to ensure that it's handled appropriately, consistent with the Public Information Act.
Yeah, I don't think there's been a formal request submitted. I think it's been as part of the strike force meetings that they have asked it. But if Tom's still on there, he can probably add some more.
Okay, so then, all right, so then if there's an issue associated with, if there's a contractual issue associated with the company not providing the city the documents that it's entitled to under the agreement, we can deal with that as well. And again, I can give the administration to determine what's being requested and whether or not it's being properly provided or not.
We have received an official public information request and did send that to Pegasus to respond to.
On the contract, I would just, you know, for anyone interested, draw attention to section seven B, ownership of the documents. And when we're required, under what circumstances they're required to provide those documentation or that documentation? So. Do we have anything else on this, guys? And gals? Nothing fantastic. Let's move on, item thirteen, discussion possible action to appoint a planning and zoning commission member to serve on the comprehensive planned strike force. I suspect everyone's aware at this point. Unfortunately, we lost a really good head in, in Jordan Scott to, well, I'll say his, his priorities in the right place. And, and we wish them all the, the very best in dealing with difficult circumstances. In that regard, we're going to need a replacement for that position. As wonderfully done as the strike force was, one thing we overlooked was a replacement process in the event we lost a, a specific position. So here we are. In the absence of that loss of position, I would have typically said, how about you just go back to the drawing board and get applications and pick your application? But alas, here we are at the meeting with no applications for this position. Counsel, I'll leave it up to you. Jordan did provide a recommendation for his replacement in Alex Robinett. That is relate to me, that was not given to me specifically. So as far as information, that's what I have. I'll leave it in the hands of counsel.
I moved to appoint Alex Robinett to the planning and zoning commission position on the strike force.
Motion for Sarah?
Second.
Sorry.
She has the bandwidth to do this because I don't know if she does, but. I think people have talked to her already. Okay, she just texted back, yes, she would do it. Yes.
Great. Motion, a second discussion, counsel? Sarah Hudson?
Hi.
Amy Patillo?
Hi.
Wendy Hundley?
Hi.
Devin Massengill? Gavin's muted. Give him a second, Buck Shapiro?
Hi.
Gavin Massengill?
Hi.
Okay. Broken with the strike force, Alex Robinett. Discussion and possible action to appoint David Smith as the vice chair of the comprehensive plan strike force. Again, referencing the loss of a really good voice there. George Scott was also serving as the vice chair of the strike force. So we need a replacement. David Smith certainly seems like a pretty good choice there.
Do we need to change our strike force policy? Because the way it was set up, the strike force co-chair was the P and Z delegate.
I will leave that up to counsel as to whether or not you want to make an official change there. I think dropping that in the lap of somebody coming in halfway through the event is going to be tough, but.
I, I, no, I agree with you. I just think that that was the way the strike force was set up. And so I'm wondering if we also need to change anything with our setup to allow for somebody other than that person to be this vice chair.
We also had an application process, which we didn't follow on the last motion that was just made. And so without, we didn't change it for that. So I believe we can just take action. So I would move to appoint David Smith as the vice chair of the comprehensive plan strike force.
Second.
Promotion from Amy and a second from Wendy, discussion, counsel? Sarah?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Wendy?
Hi.
Gavin?
Hi.
Buck?
Hi.
Great. Has somebody let David know that he now wears another mantle?
He'll be great. He's really up to speed on everything. I've gotten to talk to him. He's, he's really putting a lot of time in on it.
Yeah. Yeah, I've, I've, I've taken in a handful of the meetings. I, I don't disagree at all. Okay, thanks in advance again to both Alex and David for the continued efforts. And in fact, to all the strike force members. Discussion and possible action regarding the January twentieth, twenty twenty one city council meeting date. So that drops, I believe it's right at the beginning of school. Is that right?
We just put this on the agenda. We wanted to make sure with the council, that's inauguration day.
Inauguration.
And we had another meeting during the day that got moved for that. And it just kind of made us, you know, think to check with you guys and make sure that was an okay meeting date.
So I guess the counsel, what's in front of you right now? You're either going to be, the question is, are you going to be celebrating or commiserating to such a degree that you would prefer to move the, move the meeting to a different day and time and or time?
I think that was a good call on the staff's part because I certainly don't want to have a meeting when we might lose participation because it's a big event. Politics aside of whatever people are celebrating or not, but I think it's an important event. So I, I would be fine with moving it. What time is it being, what, what time is the inauguration actually?
It's at noon Eastern time.
Yeah, I was going to say, so kind of my, my point there, Sarah, my tongue in cheek comment. Are you guys either partying or commiserating unbelievably strongly that you're not ready to go in, you know, six, seven hours later?
It's actually a better day for me because all of my state people will be otherwise occupied, so.
There you go.
Yeah, if it's at noon, I think we should just keep our meeting normally scheduled.
I'm okay with meeting then, but again, we'll defer to, if there's someone who feels strongly about it, we'll defer to that person's.
I can see moving stuff during the day, but I think for an evening meeting, that shouldn't be a conflict.
So can I safely move on with no action on this item? Okay. Standing agenda item, update, discussion, possible action to pass a resolution request to, request a meeting with to provide information or statement. We all have this agenda in front of us that we can read, proposed South MoPAC expansion. Wendy, Amy, do we have update?
I do have an update.
Great.
I'm trying to get my notes to open. Where is it? Let's see, oh, here it is, okay. I listened to the CTRMA board meeting this morning. And one thing of note is that the, the board did spend most of today interviewing candidates for their new executive director position. Well, it's been an existing position, but new candidates for their executive director position. The other thing that was discussed is during the executive director's report, there was a discussion of the MoPAC ramp project that we've discussed in the past. It's the ramps that would improve the, the flow at B Caves Road and Barton Skyway and three sixty, the southbound side. I believe that board member Armbrust has really continued to push for this project to not get left too far on the back burner. It was, it was moving forward at a rapid pace and then suddenly halted. The reason given was COVID and budgeting. They seem to have now found the budget to cover the project within the funds that are available for MoPAC, the CTRMA side of the MoPAC funds. And they also were able to move the project cost estimated from sixteen million down to ten million and have about ten million in the account. Yeah. And so there, there weren't any slides presented. It was all verbal presentation by Mike Hulgenstein. So what I wrote down, and the board members actually asked him to repeat the timeline several times because they were trying to understand it as well, is that they are reinitiating the final design and environmental process for the project and that that will be completed, or that will be started in January of twenty twenty one, that he received consensus from the board to, to reinitiate that process. It should be final within six months. Within early twenty twenty two, that the documents would be complete to submit and receive environmental clearance. They would then advertise in twenty twenty two for building the project and contract. And it would be open to traffic in spring of twenty twenty three. So we're looking at construction potentially from spring of twenty twenty two to spring of twenty twenty three. And that's what I've got.
So memory serves, we had previously taken some action to, to support this plan?
Yeah.
We didn't take any action.
We, well, we, we worked on. We were going to do a resolution. And then we had a letter and then we never actually ever sent either.
We didn't send a letter in support, but we did at one point vote to, to support it.
Yes, we did. We did.
We just, we have, where we were supporting the ramp project and not the double decker ramp project that they named in a very similar fashion.
Correct.
We, the names are misunderstanding that we were supporting the. Misunderstanding that we were supporting the wishbone configuration.
Right.
That was getting discussed at the same time.
So with that clarification being made again now, are, here's what I'm asking you, guys, are you expecting me to bring this resolution back, send the letter or staff to do the same? Or we just keeping information?
I think that if, if we're interested in sending something, I think the letter is, is better. They can at least put that with the file. It gives us, I think that the resolution, the language is just so clinky sometimes in a resolution. And it came off as a little bit harsher than I feel like in a letter that you're able to say the same thing, but maybe not with the same tone. So we do have, the last, the last thing that Wendy and I were working on was the letter. And I think we could go back, if the council is interested in sending something, we could go back and update it and have that in January for us to send. And I, and I do feel like it would be helpful to show some support for it. Because we do want to show that we are, we are wanting improvements, which we've wanted the whole time. And this is a $10 million improvement that fixes the bottleneck in the 15th most congested roadway in the state of Texas. This is the second most congested roadway section in our region, short of I-35. And it's only going to take $10 million to fix it. And I think appreciating that this is the type of solution that we've wanted the whole time and they're working on it now. And it could potentially provide a lot of traffic relief is probably worth doing as we continue to advocate for less concrete going up in the air. And smarter solutions. So, yeah.
All right, well, appreciate the update. I'll let you guys decide within whether or not you're bringing that letter. As I recall, again, we'll go back to the specific meeting, some, been some time, but I think that letter was already pre-approved subject to specific language. So I'll let you guys handle that. That's fair?
Yeah. Thanks for the opportunity for the update. I was, I got to update the, during the Westlake Chamber meeting, which is earlier in the day, I get like five minutes to give them an update on something related to Rollingwood. And I told them about our virtual birthday party. And I was very excited to also share with them about this. And it might be a good opportunity for them as well to show some support for something that could help with the business district.
I know. I appreciate, appreciate you representing Rollingwood well there. Thank you. If there's no other thoughts, conversation there, we'll move on to 17. Update, discussion, possible action regarding the B Cave Improvement Project, Tech dot is committed to cosponsoring with the city of Rollingwood. It will address low water crossing flooding issues, expand to five lanes with shoulders and sidewalks throughout Rollingwood's portion of B Caves Road. Just to be clear, that five lanes with shoulders is two lanes either direction and a designated turn lane throughout the length of that. That is a project that we have been working on for quite some time. I draw emphasis to this item 17 in the hopes that the folks at the Strike Force will also understand that the city has been moving towards this for quite some time and trying to work collaboratively with Tech dot to achieve this as well as, well, against the flow sometimes with the folks at Campo and some other regional mobility conversations. Is there anything to update there?
Amber, can, are we able to get Epi or, I forget who the engineers were, to give us their most recent elevations of what the configuration of the roadway would look like? I remember seeing those. They sent them to us at one point and I cannot find them in my files. And I think it'd be really helpful to have for the Strike Force because it shows where they were gonna need to take the right of way. And then we had talked to them about, you know, shifting some of the right of way impacts to different sides of the road when they're trying to straighten it out. So I think that would be a really helpful thing for the Strike Force to have right now as we're going through this process.
I hope that the Strike Force can appreciate as well the number of years that have gone into this exact conversation. Believe it goes all the way back to some efforts from Tom Farrell from, that are part of six years ago. So been a long time working on that, trying to get this, this whole situation remedied for the betterment of the city. Kind of stop us from being a cut through at the end of the day. I won't bore anybody with that tirade.
Every time we talk to Tech dot, I make sure to ask for conduits under the road because you have made that very clear that we need that. So it has not been lost. I know you're on the call. So we ask for conduits.
With that, if there's no other updates or conversation on that, we'll move to letting everybody know that the reports through items 18 and 20 through 28 are available for public consumption. That is again, a very clear attempt for us to be as transparent as we possibly can about the day-to-day functionality of your city. So do feel free to dig into those if you want a monthly summary of how your city has functioned. With that, I will move or seek a motion to adjourn the meeting. Everyone's muted. You guys just want to hang out? There we go. Thank you, Sarah. Second, Amy? You're the only, yeah, I was gonna say you're the only other one unmuted.
Gavin.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, everyone, thank you all very much for your patience this evening and your good work and your hard work. To everyone that joined us, thank you all very much. We are wide open for questions, comments, and concerns as we all move forward. If I don't see you before, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Take care, everyone. Stay healthy.
Bye.